This conference will now be recorded.
And this is a continuation of the March meeting and it is April 1. Mr. LaCher.
Here.
Mr. Kish.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Ms. Holloway.
Here.
Ms. Wisconsin.
Here.
Now you have a floor.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
It's a continuation.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we can have approval of the agenda.
Well, this is a continuation of your previous agenda.
Yes.
And we highlighted those items that are to be discussed.
And it was on the other meeting.
These are all, this is the agenda that you had at the March meeting and we just highlighted those areas that that was going to come up.
Okay.
Yes, I got Tony's corrections. That's the corrected agenda that Tony gave me. Do you have that in the handouts?
Yeah.
They're very minor and all of the ones that the public has are of the, before I left, when I left last night at nine o'clock, I did big talk. So.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelly.
Certainly. So the first item of business, would you like me to jump in here?
Yeah, please.
Okay, the first item of business would be the new assessment methodology and this is a public hearing and would, the chair would accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Yes, a motion to open this public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. Commander Chair, a few weeks before, Dr. Chair began handing out our, I'll call it clean versions of each of the proposed resolutions to be adopted today. They're in order 03, 04, and 05.
This will be resolution 00, or 03.
Yes, 03. And these are just little minor typos and scribblers things I was cleaning up and then. David, I'll get you one off.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Okay, the, Madam, did you have anything you wanted to say at the opening of the public hearing or would you?
I think the motion's already been made.
Okay, the motion's been made to open it. A short description, this is an O&amp;M assessment methodology that you had contracted with Russ Wire and his company to conduct this, this special assessment methodology. And it was presented at the last meeting. The meeting was continuing until Mr. Wire could be here to answer specific questions.
Yeah.
And it is still open for public comment. We have discussed that the comments are limited to three minutes and we should avoid interaction back there. Let's just take the comments, consider them, and then move on.
Yeah, Commander Chair, if I may, I think we mentioned last time that there was a notice in the February 10th, Naples Daily News, the notice of the hearing for March 18th to consider the assessment methodology. And there was a subsequent notice because the March 18th meeting was continued. There was publication on March 21st in Naples Daily News, notice of continued meeting and public hearings of the Board of Supervisors. So that, this, that notice will also go in with all three resolutions and considerations for time. Kelly, you have a letting for the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
When you say, "public comments," does that include the emails we received from this William?
Yes, and that was the second email. We had the first email for the previous meeting. Then there was a follow-up email and that's in your handouts?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I think before we open it up for public comment, does the board have any specific questions with Mr. Wire or do you want to wait until the comments were received?
I prefer to wait until after the comment.
Okay.
How does everybody else feel?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. So you have, in writing, this is Williams' comments, and you have the, several questions or comments from Supervisor Kish that was included in your packet and a copy of that was also in the handouts. Okay, are there any comments on the public hearing that, on, this is on the operation and maintenance special assessment methodology? Are there any comments on that? Yes, ma'am?
Captain Kellmeyer.
Just turn it on the bottom.
Yeah.
There you go.
Captain Kellmeyer, is that right? Okay, the board paid Russ a very large sum of money, I think $75,000 for this report. I think either you accept it in whole or you reject it in whole, only because if you start nitpicking at specific items you're doing what you feel is in the best interest of the community. And as Mr. Jensen has pointed out many times, the old board did the same thing and that was not right in his opinion. So I would appreciate it if you would accept it all or reject it all. Thank you.
I'm going to be the first one, just to make a comment if you don't mind, but the fee that was paid Mr. Wire was probably the cheapest I've seen for assessment methodology and he did that out of, because of the long relationship we have. But it really is, you got a good team. Okay. Any other comments? All right, we propose to public hearing for comments and then discuss it and what you want to do or you can just leave it open. That's up to you guys. Move to close the public hearing. Dave?
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
That's at nine thirty seven.
I said no. It's a four one vote.
Yeah.
The record.
Oh, over. You shall, four to one, if no. Okay. Now the board can discuss it among themselves or you can just approve the resolution as some of your suggestions.
Yeah, and just, I want to make sure, and Russ, poor in Russ didn't see it. Just confirming that the methodology report is updated January 19, 2022.
Correct.
Thank you.
Cal, I'll move that we accept the.
Wait, 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 no, I, I got some questions. Nobody has any questions?
It'd still be open for discussion.
Yes, open for discussion. Open for discussion now.
Ask Russ, is it?
What's it?
If you want to ask Russ, is that what you have?
Yeah. Before you.
Yeah.
No, they can, they can ask questions before, that's right.
Sorry, I run districts too, so.
No, there's two ways of doing it. One is vote on the motion and one is have questions before the motion is made.
Yep. Okay, my question is on the O&amp;Ms, right? That's all we're talking about. Now, if a land is available for a specific use, even though it's not being used for that use, it should be charged, correct? I asked about those vacant properties in the email. The one on Stellamaris, South, and Case Drive, the gun club, I wanted to know how much was conservation and how much was not. Those would all fall under the O&amp;Ms. If it's available for use, like the one on Case Drive is multifamily, 16 units, are we charging O&amp;M? Who owns that property? That's what I wanted to get the information.
David's looked at that and.
The vacant property is owned by the Stellamaris Masters Association.
Right. It's track M2 of.
Okay, so why is Stellamaris the?
Fifth of buildings.
Why is it, why is that land different?
It's not.
It's not.
We're paying, you're paying O&amp;Ms on it?
They're paying O&amp;Ms for the whole track too.
Yeah.
That whole track includes all the buildings on that site, Case Drive.
That's why I wanted to see what.
It's not a separate, it's not a separate lot. It's all part of track M2, which are, they're paying O&amp;Ms on it now. It's not a separate lot, Russ. I told you that before. It's a, it's, it's part of the track.
That, again, it's vacant. But it could be.
Their common ground.
It's theirs. They're paid for.
That's why they could do no trespasses to their land.
It's common grounds with the, every individual unit pays O&amp;Ms, right?
Bingo.
It's designated as a recreational track on the plat, or the.
They'll probably put a pool there eventually, when they have time.
I would suggest, Commander Chair and the board, that the rationale for Russ assigning or allocating units that, I think, and you could help overhear from Russ, and the board can decide whether they accept that or not.
In that, in that case, since it is a vacant parcel, if we, what we've done in methodology is we determine, I went through each parcel that's here, seven hundred, some odd parcel, and maybe do a lot of use so that I can understand how we.
Could you grab the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you hear me back there?
No.
Is this them?
Yeah.
Try and get that. I'm trying to make it. In relation to, to blank pieces of land, when I took a look at residential, I tried to determine how many units are residential. Particularly on a single, if it's multifamily, you want to buy in the same range. You usually get four units per acre, that's where it depends. So what I legalized, when I moved a blank piece of land, I used four units per acre, especially when they're commercial or residential. Commercial, the possibility, some of these commercials down on the front here, can be, could be residential, turn it with, so that we, four units per acre, that's how we assign. And in the case, I know everyone had talked about gun clubs on that here.
Right.
As one situation and I may have a suspicion of that in, going back and researching. So, so basically that's all the, the blank pieces of land with the exception of the gun. In the gun club, do you mind getting into it right now?
Sure, might as well.
Okay. In the gun club, our engineer looked at it, our district engineer looked at it, basically have what we call 20 units or 20 acres that are, have a potential to be developed. And in that case, if you go back and look at the actual use, it's designated to DLR Club, Department of State of Florida, as it designated as a tourist attraction. And when I go into my track engineers reports in the ITD stuff, determine how many trips are generated by different types of uses. Like a commercial has very high uses. The residential, basically is about nine trips a day, but whatever people understand, it says nine trips a day, it doesn't mean you go and come back nine times. When you go back, every time you leave, there's time to come back when you want. And I understand also in the case that not everybody does it, that's the issue for us with engineers' number. It is based on tons of studies that, that's how you use. And it's used when they're doing, when they're doing planning, you're counting, that's based on anything, that's the basis when they're looking at trip generation, they use road impact. Now, back, going back to the gun range, went and I looked through, trying to find studies for gun range, they're constantly in terms of trip generation. I saw one or two where, where they've done some hybrid trip generation, they use different uses and they have, the problem is most gun ranges are indoor, tender in the room area. So this doesn't apply. So what I ended up thinking about is what would be comparable to use of that? And to me, it would be a golf course office in terms of, because it's open. And so I was looking at golf course trip generation. And they, they generate about, according to these, well, they generated about 3.74, something in that range, in acre trips per day. So you take that 20 acres and multiply it by 3.7, you end up with about seven. And you take the average of a residential unit of nine and divide that into that, you end up with about eight ERUs, which I thought was fair and reasonable for that parcel.
You mean, you mean O&amp;Ms?
Yeah, I know that, correct. Because if you look at your budget, your budget is almost, not quite, almost half of it is, 56 is roadways, and that's Thanksgiving roadways and everything else. 2.7% is water management. Blank land, basically, I look at, when I look at water management, I look at purbius and their purbius surfaces. Like by measuring a single family home, the impurbius would be the house, the deck, right? All that, and purbius surface would be the rest. And I think 100% would flow off the top, 100% of the acre. And then I also add the purbius, which really has between 10 and 20%. There's a flow we can have in the flat, because you'll fill up a management of the trip flow. So from a water management perspective, that's only flowing 10 to 20% into the water management system. And then your, your administration is 4.1%. So it boils down to the roadways administration. Roadway is the easier way of measuring it. So consequently, that is, that could be one of my adjustments to my methodology because I really thought about that long part, because that one was a very difficult one to figure out, but I think it would be a reasonable adjustment. The second one adjustment that I would recommend is taking a look at the hotel. I know there was some recommendations and people were concerned about, they already used the bar and ERUs to the restaurant. And I understand that a lot of you use them, so really your trips are counting. When I was considering that, I was looking at it as an independent entity, so that hotel people were using it, which means hotel units are being charged in the area and, and the bar would, restaurant would be as well. So then I was thinking about, remember, this is a very unique situation. It's not like a restaurant that's in town, that you have people that are driving by coming in and the use is different. So my other recommendation is to take the three off of the restaurant and the one off the bar. And when I did all the calculations, it came back, it actually lowered the single family or the residential units from about five, five or four, about four to six, if you sense that. Essentially, those calculations, but it does, I think it's more fair if I need those changes.
Yeah, everything's based on trips. What about the vacant land that's over by the hotel?
The vacant.
Yeah, what's, what are they doing? What are you doing with that?
They're, they're based on, because you built the DLR, or the commercial, so commercial to me, if I look at it and go back into my calculations, it's four units per acre. So it's the same as the ones out front? Correct.
But a gun, see, you're losing me because a gun club isn't commercial. That's what you're saying. I mean, it's, it's got a use, but I mean, that, that whole facility back there pays less in total tax than a re, one residence in here. And we're, I mean, that's, that's a. I'm talking total package, everything, assessments and everything.
I understand.
But assessments are even way less, so.
There's a difference and that's why I was coming up with the, which I thought was more fair, of how can we assess that? What is the basis for that? That's what I thought.
Russ, using the methodology that you gave us.
Yes.
In it, you put the gun club is considered special use and if the four ERU per acre calculation is used, that parcel would be significantly over assessed due to the benefits received for the budget. That's right in your information.
Correct.
So now you're saying something different.
No. What I'm saying is, is if we would have done it based on four acres per acre, yes.
I see.
Way over the assessment.
I see.
But what I, so I switched, and I switched, I basically said, true benefit of its getting is your road. That's what, their water management's negligible administration's, I mean, they're paying their share, I think, of that, because it's a measure. So that's why I went to the measurement of the turn, which I, not comparing the way you do it, since that's, you deliver your budget, you have to deliver your budget, what is the water management and the administration?
Now, the gun range is highly seasonal and they don't have the benefit of streetlights, paved road, rubbish collection, nothing. Mosquito control, nothing. No benefits. They're out there on their own.
I understand, but I'm still doing it based on your roadways. And if you, you look at what you're doing here, again, I roll back up into the one ERU by the resident, which is the basis of it. That's what we call equivalent residential unit. Or you can call me our equivalent residential assessment, whichever way. In this case, they are benefiting from the road, which I thought.
Yeah.
But not year round, like a homeward.
I understand, and you can't look at it from a seasonal basis, because then you're going to have, that, well, this single family is season.
Yeah.
Do that. It has to be done.
Has to be.
It was a golf course, probably, yeah, that's season. Correct. In there, the college. Correct.
Yeah, I was going to, maybe can I make a comment? I'm not. Case, person purchasing the 2.6, maybe, maybe the 13 in the parcel, but the one thing that I hear is the tension between the pie and how it's been cut out. So I appreciate that. As the lands of the future go forward, a thing that I enjoy hearing from you, that on the commercial side, you allocated four EQR's per acre. Well, that means six acres is 24 EQR's. To me, if I'm going to go develop it and I think, well, I'm paying, paying for 24 here, I should be able to do 24 units if the zoning allows it, you know? I would think there's a sense of inherent right that I'm going to get an EQR to develop it at that time.
Lindsay, do you mind, this is just the board's, and the public comments was already closed and.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I didn't address anything, I didn't, you have to.
Well, you didn't both have to know, that's why I said.
Yeah. But anyway, that, getting back to gun club, that's one thing. The other part of the methodology, which I'm glad you brought that up, is this needs to be looked at every year. And all of a sudden, let's say they go in and they finally get their plat approved or they get whatever uses they get approved, then we have to look at that based on those uses, is what we do. And we recalculate ERUs every year based on change, and we had nothing to be changed, depending on the year, but you have to make that adjustment. And when you finally get your parcel approved and we look at it as based on what got to come in there, right how it's based on the late plan, you don't know what's going to go on it. So.
Russ, Commander Chair, I mean, just has two questions for Russ. Russ, do you recommend any changes to your January 19, 2022 report?
The only two changes I recommend is what we had discussed about was, was, first was the unful change that, you know, I think that made it look fairly equitable. And the second was, we take off of the, the three ERUs on the restaurant, one on the bar, which, which is a mix of changes.
Do you have an edited version of your report?
I don't have an edited version.
But he didn't say that, that.
My concern though is, I think, I'd like to have the board see that, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, because what we're, what the proposed action is, is to adopt this methodology effective upon amendments to the rules of procedure where we take the assessment, general fund assessments under the general rules. And so if you look at the resolution to adopt this assessment methodology, it says it becomes effective upon the adoption of resolution 2022-05, which is the rules amendment. And I always like to attach.
I, I understand. I wouldn't be long enough.
To avoid confusion and chaos.
I don't understand it. I apologize. I didn't raise the people, and it wasn't because I didn't want it.
I know, but when's the next board meeting, Commander?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Okay, good try.
And I can, I can send it to you, I mean, on those adjustments. It's very minor in terms of the assessment.
Yeah, what I would suggest, when we get to that point, the board, the board's amenable to those amendments that Russ indicated today, that the board approves those and can adopt it. And then we bring it back for final, I'll call it a consent gen review item on the April 15 board meeting. We still like to keep the May 1 adoption date or effective date for all of that.
Right.
That's the, that's the process. But I always like to have my boards look at the final document, especially something like this.
Yeah. You just said something about three ERUs on the bar at the hotel?
No, I think it was on the restaurant.
On the restaurant?
Yeah, those two, those two, there would be four ERUs that would come off.
When did we discuss that change?
We, we had, it was my recommendation, it's up to you to discuss.
Oh.
And my two, the two recommendations, one was, was increasing ERUs on the gun range to six, or two to eight, and then eliminating four from.
And that's a reaction to the first public hearing. And the email that you had with comments, and I believe some of the board members also asked about the gun club and the bar, or I'm sorry, the gun club and the restaurant and bar.
And also the change due to a mathematical basis for doing those changes.
So, so, but the commercial properties on the other side, have they changed from what they were or not?
None.
It's what they're, they're at already. One, one O&amp;M per.
The assessment amount changed because of the ERUs are changed.
Yeah.
But like I said, when you look at the residential comes down a little bit, those will come down a little bit, not much, just because what we're doing is we're basically adding two more ERUs. Because I have eight over here, take away four over here, you're already two over here. So with that, there's, we're adding six here, taking away four there. So we're adding two more ERUs, including those extra two. That means you're dividing the budget by four ERUs, which means the assessment's less. And it's not, I've said, it's not much, it's novel, but I wanted to get a basis for that to do the parcel. And then I, when I heard from the public hearings about the restaurant.
But Russ, you said something about the, on the commercial land as is, but I think when, if it's sold, whatever, whatever it turns into, it gets reassessed.
Okay, you said it can be reassessed yearly, so as soon as.
No, 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 I always say that we review every year.
Review it yearly.
And what we do is if there are any changes, then we make adjustments.
Right, so if it, say it hypothetically went for sale.
Yeah.
Then we would change it to then.
Right.
It would go.
What they're building.
Well, no, no, not even what they're building. Once it goes for sale and it's not a gun club anymore, then it would go to four per acre.
Well, it, yeah, that would depend on what it gets changed to. If they sell it, let's say they sell it.
Yeah.
Well, it's still going to say on, it's going to say tourist attraction, until they start going through the process of the, once they go through the process of approval, that's when we make the adjustment. Because what we're doing is we're going from what is current use is, if the, if the property praiser changes the code, then we will reassess it. But it's up to whatever the property praiser considers as a code.
So, so as soon as it went to, uh, planning or whatever?
Right, that's perfect, I think.
Yeah. Once you know what it is, then that individual is, is analyzed.
Well, I mean, if they, if they change their, if they ask for a change of use.
Yes.
Then once, once they do that, then we change.
Once it's approved, yeah.
Right, it doesn't have to be what's going on there, just the change of use.
But they have to go through that approval process to make sure that they use, approve, because we're not going to change, we're not going to change our basis.
But we're already charging people that we haven't had approved things.
But their, their use is commercial, it says commercial.
Right.
This is, if this, if they go in and the property praiser changes it, yes, then we get changed.
Okay.
It's all for what it's used as now.
Right, I'm talking if the zoning changes, then we go with it.
Correct. When he talks about annual changes, that's the budget, the amount that's charged per ERU. The, you're not going to review the charges all the time unless there's a change that's been approved through the property praiser. But what is being reviewed is how much is charged. You're going to adopt the budget, we got a number of ERUs, we'll divide them into, and that'll give us the amount of money that a ERU is charged.
And I can give you another example, only for, compared to this, to this gate up in the Falls Irons. I mean, every year we go through and take a look, because lands get, finally they're getting developed up there, we're down to the maximum, somebody comes in and, and they buy a piece of land, get it approved for 100 units, where that 100 units gets sold in the pot, the rest of them. Just like here, if we did that commercial over there, we're on four units per acre and they come in and do 20,000 square feet, there would be an equivalent of the 20,000 square feet, I would, you would need ERU calculation for that. And it would be reassessed and everybody's assessment would change based on that ERU calculation. But you, all I'm just saying, you need to look at it every year if there are changes. If not, the methodology stays as it is. But if somebody sells the land or gets approved or states not selling, they go through the approval process. Somebody goes in and decides they want to do 24 or, let's say you want to do 30 homes on there, you're going multifamily, you do 50 homes on there, all of a sudden, that ERU calculation changes. Your ERUs are going to go up. So, but, but until now, the only way we could measure that was based on the four units per acre, which is what it's.
So if he buys this property back here, this 50 acres that we've got, right? When do the O&amp;Ms kick in?
Soon as he buys it.
Wait a minute, which? Soon as he buys it?
Which, the parcel 13.
It's for sale.
The 15.
The property's closed, then the O&amp;M would go on immediately. And then, you know, you. And then, you know, you, whatever he, the, uh, negotiates as far as purchasing of ERCs.
Right.
The utilities, that would, uh, you know, he would have that.
You could either phase in or put it in all at once, or whatever you want.
But it would be calculated how it's sold now. And whatever they develop, let's say it's an equestrian center, then the, the rate might change because it's the new way it's sold.
Okay, but my, my question is, like, this is for 100 sites.
Yeah.
Okay, but that wouldn't be, um, 100 ONMs. It would be, it would, no. It will, once the plan's approved.
Once it's approved.
But before that.
As it is.
It's, there isn't anything on it right now.
They, they assess the property right now based on the blank link. When they get approved, then the property praiser comes in and makes this change.
And that's when it flips.
And that's a leave, we'll, we'll follow that same situation. So, there's flexibility built in there, depending on what gets built. Or what is proposed, or approved, sorry, need more approved.
It's gotta be approved by the county first.
But it's already got a designation. And as soon as he buys it, I agree with Cal, the ONMs go on immediately, and it's four per acre.
It's being assessed.
That's 200.
So, I mean, but one, one important consideration is, the board can then, board makes a determination, the elegant assessments, at the budget time. Because remember, you're not going to levy the assessments until, at the time you adopt your budget. So, at that, at that point in time, the notice would then go out as part of the third process to this property owner saying, you know, you have an increase in assessments over last year. That's part of the notice process under the statute. So, I mean, we could, we could say at the time, if that happens in February, come to the board, we can say, okay, when we do our budget, we adopt the budget, we need to make sure we allocate this number of ERUs when we do the budget. Is that correct, Russ?
Correct, so if he, if he's buying a land, the assessments that are on it now stay that way until he gets approved, whatever the use is.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, it goes for 200, and then if he puts 100 units, and then it goes to 100. Because it'd be one per unit.
Yeah, it, it would go down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's.
Whatever gets approved down there right now, we're basing it on the density of four units per acre.
Right. You said, okay.
Any questions from the board?
So, do we need to?
Yeah, what I would suggest is that this public hearing. Well, no, I would just say, continue until April 15th. For the sole purpose of, we already have comments of Mr. Wire providing a revised edited version of the assessment methodology updated, assessment report, for the board's consideration of resolution 2022-03 at that time.
Is, what's the problem with approving the resolution as amended, uh, with the suggestions he had so that we can get this off the agenda?
I, I, I never recommend adopting assessment resolutions on, with amendments that no one sees. You know, I wanna see the actual text. I mean, I've, I've been too many times, and we all think we understand what the text is, then it comes out, and we go, oh, that's when we're here, when we're there.
Yeah.
And I'm not favored, that, that's not my favorite approach to doing that. My recommendation is this board.
I agree.
And again, it's effective May 1st, so I don't know what the use is.
Yeah, it's, all you're doing is just not kicking it down the road. We wanna make sure that I can get the changes in the final reports.
Yes.
You are all happy, and it does tie into the, uh.
The weeks.
You know, so I have the most of what you said.
Yes, to continue consideration, Russell, if you have, if you have, that works. You're supposed to continue now, 2022.
And you're gonna table it until the next meeting. And you're only tabling the resolution, not the public hearing.
Right.
Public hearings then, well, well, public hearings closed.
Yeah, and it's only for the purpose of seeing the final report.
Yes.
So, are you tabling the public hearing until next meeting? Or are you tabling the decision and the resolution?
I'd say, I'd say continue the public hearing, just to make sure. Guys, I don't want any, now for questions to come, anybody in the future challenging it.
Can I ask the question, why Russ is here?
One minute. Did we have audience? No.
Uh, you, you don't, uh, but Russ can certainly talk to you.
Russ, could you talk about Marina? And how, I know I was here in the 2000s and so forth, but to share that information with everybody about how you can come up with the assessment of four units for that acreage, regardless of the size of the boats, or whether somebody's living on a boat, and driving down our roads, and operation and management salaries. I mean, where does it get reduced to 0.25?
Uh, let me do that. Little lady, let me share. This is probably, you're part of.
You don't wanna address this to everybody?
It was presented.
In G.
Yeah, he did at the last meeting.
He was not here at the last meeting.
Sorry, I mean, when he was here, he did talk about why he did that with the roads. It doesn't matter how long your boat is, how, what your road usage is, is one summary.
What about salaries, and lights, and mosquito spray, and things that are in that ONM budget? I mean, a board member could ask a question, if I can, I'd like to discuss it, it was in my email to you.
I, uh, I guess I'm confused in what you're asking.
They don't get mosquito spray, only the parking lot.
Not even, not even the parking.
And not even, not even. And they can't be that close to the water, so they don't get that. Um, and the parking lot is actually the park department, right?
I don't know.
So.
And that is based, based, the bottom line is based on, and the approval.
So, you want to tab it, uh, continue the whole board understands the question that, uh, has been asked before. Are you satisfied with what Russ just said? So, then the motion would be to, uh, continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
And authorize Russ to make the changes to the report.
Changes, that makes a difference.
For that reason. So, with that, we wanna go with it again. Uh, okay.
With whom it's purpose of, yeah, I already had you.
Okay.
Cal, but it's gotta be specifically for the, just through two changes, that's it.
Well, I mean, I mean, all of it is, so you're.
Yeah. Right.
You need to take a look, yeah.
Because it affects all of it.
Okay. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None.
Oh, that's, that was, okay, I didn't hear Russ.
Yes.
I watched this, Russ.
He was talking.
Watched this, Russ.
Uh, that would take us to parcel 13. And, uh, thank you, Russ. Uh, could you give that to Mr. Power? Uh, did you turn it off?
No, I didn't turn.
No, no, flip it back. Does it work? No, it's not. There you go.
Uh, I've got the easy part of the, first part is not big. Anyway, uh, bring you a brief update on what happened since the last meeting. Uh, it was last Thursday or Friday, you instructed to raise the price of this price from 3 million to 5 million. And that was done immediately, uh, on the internet, changed it, uh, the actual brochure, which you can get off the internet. I don't think we changed until Monday or Tuesday this week. We had, uh, what I'd like to do is lead us up to, uh, Mr. Case, because he's got the best off right now. Leading up to that, uh, we had, uh, four other interested parties, and they all bowed off at the $5 million. And then we had, uh, Scott Preppin, and he's the fellow that owns the post slips and whatnot. And he had a letter of intent, and, completely, 850. And a very good plan, but he wrote us a letter stating that, uh, he spent a lot of time, et cetera, talking to his audience and whatnot, and that's all he, you know, poured. So, that's.
Which is how much?
1.8 assessment, with it. The appraised praiser.
That passes out.
Sure. Yeah, it becomes a public record once you pass it on.
Alright.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Is this just happens?
I'm not sure that's right one.
I don't know why we need it.
I may have pooped up on that.
That's all, we don't, we don't.
Uh, number two was, uh, old Tom Jennings, 1990, who sold his arena RV park on the Ohio River. A year ago, for $12 million. And, uh, he wanted to buy this and develop this property and turn it into an RV. Uh, they offered 3 million dollars. He's not going off that number. Mr. Case is very creative, and I think he's got a pretty nice proposition. I think we should probably involve that, and I'll pass those out.
Sorry.
Mr. Case is new proposal?
Uh, I, you do have, uh, Mr. Case's newest proposal. That's what he's doing now, okay. I, I do know that Mr. Gregor Jensen has been working with Mr. Case, and he probably has some comments, and he'd like to introduce Mr. Case, if that's possible. And all of this was sent to you previously.
You'll see on the, the cover here, uh, he's got a microphone.
Mic. Mic, microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Anyway, you'll see in the cover that he's got a, a new drawing, showing a residential development of 100. And, uh. Case, I have it on the packet. Mr. Thomas. You have him in the packet.
Yeah.
No, I'm he, no, tell him.
Mr. Case, obviously, he has a great deal of interest in this project, and he's done a lot of work. And what you say out here, let's. Yes, I love it out here. Okay, very good, my fingers are invested. See, um, would you all like to hear Mr. Case?
I'd like to.
Sure.
Is it okay?
Go ahead, Russ.
Um, you may remember, those of you who were at the last meeting, um, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. I asked Lindsay to come, I met him at Deb's meeting. None of us knew he was there, he slid in, really smart of him, and we met him afterwards. Um, and I asked him to come to, uh, the meeting, um, that we just had. And he came in blind, he didn't know what was going on, but, and he was ready to go out skiing with his kids. They were on spring break. Anyway, when he walked in, he was under the impression, because the gentleman from the, the campground was here, he was under the impression he had to make his judgment right away, and that we were kind of boxing him in. And so he appeared to some of you to be a little bit scattered. And I get that, uh, he was stressed more than scattered. He's not at all scattered, he's not at all scattered. So, I just wanted to clear that up. He, uh, he's the vice president of a very large company in Colorado Springs, and, uh, he's also one of the brothers, and they've been in business since 1953. Uh, they do most of their focus in Colorado Springs. And, um, I still don't know how he came out here, but he came out here, he loves it. Uh, and, uh, he's very interested in this, very, very interested. And he's, uh, very creative. Uh, I took it upon myself to spend some time with him yesterday. I drove him around the property, I showed him everything, I drove him up through the gun club. We went all around the neighborhoods here. He was asking me about how the resale value here was going up so quickly. I explained to him, it's kind of a hidden gem, and that things were selling very well. Uh, I just wanted to reassure you, he absolutely knows what he's doing. He didn't have this 24 hours ago. He had all this stuff made up. And, um, he is open to, right now, 100 single-family homes uh, that will fit the environment and will fit the area. Uh, and he's gonna listen to anything we want. I gave him a list, uh, because I believe we need to put in, to protect us and us in the future, a deed restriction on the land before we convey it to him, uh, that says that there'll never be an RV park there, there'll never, if he sells it tomorrow, things that can't happen. And that's, I wanna put a motion in to do a deed restriction at some point. But so anyway, he came, he flew out here again, he's here, and I'll go ahead and tell him what you'd like to do.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me. Um, on the plan here, it's really clear. I wanna do exactly what you want. I don't have another agenda. Okay, I did exactly my 2.7 acre piece. I was going to take it off, 5.69 units that potentially could be for the zone, to just say, I will plan it and tell you guys, decide what you wanna do with your parcel 13. And I said, hey, this is what I'm hearing you say. So, the plan in front of you is your plan that I have heard. I just know how to channel it into God. And if there's anyone that would have a different opinion about it, my offer is based on this, how, I'm not coming in and say, hand or flip, you know, do something else. This is part of the agreement. I need the agreement from you as well, because you tell me, yes, that's what you want. I'm saying, yeah, that's what I wanna do. Then we go to the county and get a process done a lot quicker. The product here, I envision, is perhaps some of you own some of the homes or the condos, perhaps you'll wanna move into this area, because, though, you don't have the dog. Okay, some don't like that. They may love the area, but they don't want the dog. Or, it keep, it does sensitize itself to the 10-acre conservation dog. It's kind of not recorded, but it is. So, and we had to keep the buck from the gun guys. Because they can be all variable on what they do, and it could be another user in the future. But, but we do know one thing, is that these owners here, who, maybe some of you guys who are part of the gun club want to own it, you're okay, maybe the gun club manager lives in the end house. But I know that was a problem, but as I worked with the board and with Mr. Denson, I discovered that this plan probably creates the best capital enhancement for the project. It has the least impact. And if you look at the 266 sewer taps, water taps that are, are available, it would only rely on 20, on 100 of them, so the other 166 could be used for, you know, perhaps Mr. Tom, uh, you know, redeveloping over there on the hotel as part of the new parcel. Also happen. And, and I, the allocation strategy that this gentleman's done, I consider superior. I know that you all are trying to understand it, but when you, you have to be like, platonic about assess boundaries and how these things happen. So, when I would go in here, I specifically said in the contract, rather than your EQR confusion, I specifically said 100 units. So, I would expect that the day we close, I'll pay for 100 units until I pay for the tax. And then the deal, to get to the 5 million, I thought the best way to do it is, look, I respect certain, what you paid, nothing for the site, and put what's going on over here in April. So, I thought, that's why he brought it up to 5 million. And I thought, okay, the way I can do that is, I'll still come in at the 3 million, and then each house gets 20,000 bucks per house, prevents them. So, you really get your 2 million there. So, you really hit 5 million cash out of the deal. You're helping me on the 5 million upfront hit. This 3 million to 5 million is different than when I came to the table. And I, I bona fide, it's kind of unique that I came to this table because I was here before the 13 became knowledgeable to my life. So, I wasn't here pursuing that. I was already here buying that, that 2.6 acre. So, I think that there's gotta be, this community, I want, I want to build my home here. So I wasn't here pursuing that, I was already here buying that 2.6 acre, so I think that there's gotta be, this community, I want, I wanna build my home here, I wanna live here. So I'm vested to be here. I'm happy to answer questions if you'd like.
I got a question.
Due diligence period will be till the 31st of May?
I think, right. 60 days.
Yeah, that's like 60 days.
Yeah, so we, I've had a lot of, I've begun discussions with the engineering and tried to find who would be the engineer that would do all the designing. And legal groups, I'm trying to get the proper legal attorneys to contend and draft agreements with your attorney. So that the, the EQRs are all exactly understood from the date we close to the date that the permits are pulled, and how much money's exactly flowing in the district.
Um, two things, terminologies that he uses that we don't use, when he says taps, he means utility ERCs. Uh, developers call those and other parts of the country taps, in other words, where you plug into the main system. So, uh, originally, what we heard from Deb's meeting and the way I've, I've always felt, and, and Deb's meeting was extremely beneficial in a lot of ways, because it wasn't us doing it. And one of the things we heard was, we don't want too many people, we don't want a lot of traffic extra, we don't want a proliferation. One of the biggest reasons we didn't want 300 IRV spots back there, among others. So he, I said that one of the biggest things is we don't wanna negatively impact Orchid Co., which is your direct neighbor, anyway. We don't want the houses to do it, we don't want a tower, because that's what you told us. And single-family homes, the cottagey that fit this area, landscape correctly, that's what we want. We wanna help all of our resale values up. He agreed.
Out of the 48 acres, I'm only using 23.
Right.
Open space conservation.
And the pond, you're all familiar with the, with the hotel property, I have an email in to Rick LaCastro now, looking for a meeting to buy the old hotel land from the county, which he wants to incorporate. And that pond, some of you don't even know it's there, but it's a really big pond, it's all covered with bushes right now. He wants to make that all open space, open to all of us as part of the plan. So it's 100 homes on that whole big piece of land.
So it's not a gated community.
I attached the exhibit to my offer, it's legally binding part of my offer as my intended outcome.
One other thing is, uh, that we discussed, correct me if I get this, don't have this right. He sees it as coming in Union Road and just going to the left, not to the right, because you don't want people going up by the waste treatment plant and stuff. Uh, that road will still be there, but his main focus is all gonna be along the water and along the left-hand side.
I have one question. The, uh, the picture of what he's willing to develop is dependent upon the, uh, hotel.
You mean the county land?
The county, yeah, county land.
Well, the geometry of that is, but I mean, this is all gonna be really clear to the county, this, within 30 days, we're gonna have the geometry or region.
The only question I have is, that's a, an unknown variable.
Yeah.
If you're not known, the county will turn around and sell it to us, so.
My planner followed the county codes as he laid it out, but of course, yes, that was, his, his best judgment was to bring the geometry of the road, which would require the county. And I told him to just produce it as if we had the county on the table.
It is.
It does go to the right though.
Yeah, well, no, he wants it to go to the left.
But the dormitory.
Yeah, oh yeah, well, that's the other wild type, the dormitory he owns, and he wants, he was, or maybe still is, going to put in one of these new small, I call them box hotels, that come in modular. And they're three or four stories, some five, and, but I don't know if he decided against that or not.
No, I told you exactly what it said, I did not intend anything on it until you decide what you wanna do with 13, because my blessing's gonna come from your decision on my little deeds.
So you, you could possibly put in, was it two and a half acres?
Yeah.
Quarter acre lots, quarter acre lots, we're talking maybe 10 additional.
Okay.
They have hotel property?
Yes.
I'm sure there's delinquent assessments with the CID on there.
No, there's not, they're all the way.
On the county.
The tax collector owns it free now, it's been, uh.
Whoa, whoa, how did that happen and then not happen on parcel 13?
Because this one was foreclosed.
We're for the town, so we don't pay it.
Right, the county foreclosed on that.
We have a tax deed.
Right, we have a tax deed.
With the tax detail.
But that two and a half acres was privately, no, I'm sorry, the other land, um, the county owns it now, it is sheeted over to the county about a year ago.
But the county owned, owned the acreage in the back?
No, 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 it was fully checked. Before it could have sheeted over. It didn't have sheeted over. The original, the last CID board bought it directly.
I, I guess it's over my head.
Yeah, but this land, um, is sheeted over to the tax collector after being three years on lands for sale, going through all the legal stuff. What happens then is, it just happened to these lots right here, along the lake, same thing. The tax collector gets them free and clear and everything else is basically written off, the county loses all their taxes, we lose our, uh, CID fees. And that's what's happened in the past before with developers. Fire control district, everything taxing. Everybody lost everything, whatever. The, uh, the, the one comment I had or in this, Mr. Case has suggested, or has offered, 20,000 per ERC, which could be interpreted as what you guys are now establishing as a value for an ERC. Uh, which is more than what you're getting now, but it is less than what people have turned down for ERC previously. I, Lindsey and I talked about this, and I looked at him and I said, listen, we've been beat up for over a year on this thing, we're not in the real estate business, residents are sick of it, we sure as hell are sick of it. And we just want somebody honest to come in here and do this, and so we can move on to two-hour meetings again. And. You need to establish. Right, oh, no, no, you're right. Getting calls. Right. Uh, how much per ERC?
Could it, could we call it something different than an ERC, could we call it some type of impact?
Well, an ERC is a, a reservation and getting a commitment, you now own those, that portion of the wastewater, water sewer pipe, you're reserving.
I'm used to buying EQRs, like, yeah, a hundred thousand dollars here, and then I know I have them, but then I still pay.
So basically what he told me, I looked at him and I said, are you crazy, because nobody's gonna buy this, I don't buy it, they're never gonna buy it. And he goes, no, you'll buy it, because it makes perfect sense. And it does, it's actually genius, uh, for a lot of different reasons. So we're getting all said and done with 100 homes, the equivalent of 5 million dollars when it's all said and done. And the only thing between us and that are the county approvals, and we put it in. One thing you might have to work through is, it sounded like what you had said, Lindsey, is that it would be basically a tactic. 20,000 of each home books in. There's a connection fee already in the rules.
Right.
So what, what an ERC? So if you're purchasing in ERC, you're purchasing the rights to, you're reserving your portion of the capacity of that plant.
And that's 4,000 per unit?
20,000. No, but.
Now.
Oh, uh, now, yeah, so that's, that's just, that's not getting the, you've gotta do both. You've gotta get half the ERC, and then when they, you start building a home, then you need to pay the connection fee and, uh, everything else.
Fee or fee.
Fee or fee. Oh, and he just thought with 4,000. Is he talking about 20,000 for O and M? Yeah. For ERC. Right, so you're talking about the O and M, that's different.
You're getting 5 million dollars.
Right, that's that.
Then you get your ERC.
Right.
Yeah, Cal was talking about this.
Yeah, utility. So there's a ERC and an ERU. Right. One is for the, uh, the general fund, the operation inmate, so as soon as you purchase it, uh, based on, uh, bare vacant land, you're going to owe, oh, you'll be charged 200 acres per year.
Well, in this offer, I'm saying 100.
Well, but it, you're also, you're on C, it's utility.
Right, you guys can decide how to balance that or not.
You can call it.
Coming as a hundred.
Well, uh, Russ had it.
Yeah, most of it is O and M.
Yes.
And ERC is reservation in the water. Well, it's not wet, but it's the terminology, he's talking about 100, more than 100, O and M, right? Uh, well, initially, 200.
200.
200, right.
But remember, low on the ground is a lot of conservation, right? So I'm, uh, upfront, I'm saying I'm only dealing 23 acres.
Okay, what were, what were, yeah, and that can be, you know, the board can determine how that is, well, in like, but there's, it's two separate things. You got the O and M, which is separate from the sewer. Now, when somebody builds a house, they're gonna ask us, is water and sewer available? If they have not received or reserved capacity in that plant, which is a DRC, if they don't know it, we're gonna say, no, it is not available. And a duty for.
I'm going in now, buying them all up front.
That's the way I interpret the proposal.
The 160, then you'll have 166 to allocate to Mr. Tom and the developers.
Sure.
And I'll pay for 100 acres.
Pay for those ERCs, then you have 800 ERCs that's, uh, that is for the water plant. 20 grand a piece. That's 20 grand.
He's preserving.
He's preserving.
And he builds the house.
And he will pay for them as he issues the permit for the, I mean, that's what it's, that's what the proposal says.
Yeah, proposals are set, these details be right off.
And even if it were, as the home is complete, there has to be a drop.
Yeah, right, the connection fees do not have to be paid at closing, it's just when somebody is ready to build a house.
It says additional. To me, I have to put a requirement on the builder, they have to pay at 20, or.
Well, we can't reserve it until it's.
No, I'll be if I've already paid it, I've already paid you.
Still haven't, and that could be a credit, they don't even need it, we'll start processing.
And not to you, because I've already, they'll just be me.
Yeah, so that's how he gets reimbursed. It makes perfect sense, never heard of it before, it's 5 million dollars, can't be done, but there it is.
Because you're willing to take the time, or it's with me, I can each unit get the 20, so you're maximizing your output of that. And how much revenue will this 100 units start kicking to the district, go tons?
Cash flow. O and M, one source. And it's not a proliferation, it's, it's livable, it's, we have to do something, if it was up to me, it'd be vacant the rest of my life, can't do that. So this is, in my opinion anyway, the best possible solution for all of us.
Now, may I ask a question?
Terry is feeding.
Terry is.
This is just for the board.
Yeah, I'm just for the board right now.
No, it's just for the board.
I was just gonna ask a question.
You could probably ask him when he's done, but this is for the board.
Thank you.
We done, Lindsey?
It's good, excellent, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
So, I, what does the board want to do? You have one solid offer, that's the only one they have right now, correct, Mike? Yeah.
Yeah.
Mike, can you hear us? Can you hear us? This is the only solid offer you have on the table right now, right?
Right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept it with the option, we need to put in a, a deed restriction. And I want the deed restriction done at some time before we button it up.
I just, before, well, Tony has something, yeah.
Just on that point, uh, the offer is indicated, it should be accepted by, before, just Monday, as it's, today's Friday. The, uh, and what I would suggest is, following up on what Mr. Jensen said, following up on discussions last year with the other transaction, I had sort of prepared a brief outline.
Good.
Additional deal points to the deed, one is along what you said, Mr. Jensen, is deed restrictions in favor of the district, as to the district approved development plans, require district board approval of proposed submittals prior to any submission.
Tony, could you finish that after we get a second for the motion?
I second.
Okay.
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry, these are suggestions to be in the motion.
Right. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, require board approval, district board approval of proposed submittals prior to any submissions to governmental agencies or developed orders, because you're, you're getting a representation as to what's gonna be submitted. But a property owner needs authorization from the current person or figure, or owner, as you. Uh, require board approval of proposed approvals, uh, as plans typically change during the development review process, in other words, goes back and forth. Uh, provide, require a, a review and design review procedure if the board wants to, that's up, we talked about that before, if you're not. And that desire to have, that's fine too, deed restrictions in favor of the district, as to the district's approved development plans and uses. Those, I think, would be additional terms and conditions, uh, design review process, conditions as to type of uses, uh, and that the board has to approve anything before it goes to the county and final approval.
If your motion was out, Jensen.
Right, I second saying that.
And one other aspect too, again, to accept your offer, but it's, again, it's tied to April 4th. So the question is, we're just, we need to work with Mr. Case's attorneys to wrap it up, if we can come back to the board this next week.
Can we get it done that quick? And I look, you gave us April 4th.
Oh, well, if you have attorneys, I won't, I won't draft the table, by the time we get out of here, it'll be. You don't be able to weekend, I, I, but I think the board needs to see, we'll tell you, enter the board so we can have it until 15.
And then only Terry.
I'm not familiar.
We're not following.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with, uh, putting a deed restriction out there, is that legal?
Yes, sure, we own.
Guys, I don't think you need it if I'm attached with my option, my name.
We just wanna make, you know.
In my opinion, that needs to be recorded, reported. So this is contractual obligation, but at closing, there would be deed, deed restrictions.
It's nothing we need to over.
No.
It's just, we don't want it getting sold, let's say the market case, because it happened before here, and so we just wanna protect ourselves against a default.
That's my plan.
Yeah.
If I don't have it, do that.
Yeah, he's it.
Oh, I mean, I'll work on it over the weekend.
What, uh, you're, there's a motion to approve it with the deed restriction and you're recommending that, uh, I think it's, uh, the same now. So, and then the board is gonna ratify that at the next meeting?
No.
No, okay, so it's just a done deal, intention upon, uh, the attorney working with, uh, Case's attorney and coming up with those conditions that then I.
And then, and then, wouldn't Terry be authorized to sign?
Yes, yeah, that's what we should do.
And I want to, also, Terry and Cal and Dave will also go check to make sure it's all in there and also provide, call the board numbers.
So can we have a vote on this?
We did.
No, that was the first and the second, wasn't it? You have something to say.
Only question I have is, do you wanna, before we close this, do you want to allow, um, public input at this point?
Your view?
Once it's closed, it's closed.
I, I think.
I know, but this is what.
It's an interesting action item, I think we'd be there to have a public comment if they wish. It's an action.
We make the motion, if you have a second, then you can have a public comment.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Yes, sir.
So we have the first.
We make the motion and we second now.
Public comment?
Anybody have a public comment? Yes, so.
Can you come up?
All right, Lindsey, buddy. Uh, what are the costs and see how it can be? Road cost or connection cost?
They, the connections are paid for, that's ERC, road cost, the developers pick up on the property itself. Am I missing anything? Uh, possibly just union roles. Yeah. That would be a CID. Yeah, if we have to, we have to.
I was gonna say, that's, that's not a change of the obligation we already have.
Right, nothing different than what we already have.
Right, nothing different than what we already have.
But let's say it would be possible for the, all the infrastructure inside the development, the waters, or.
Right, everything inside the development is paid by the developer.
Which is what we do now.
Yeah, it's like they're building their own village.
Yeah.
I think it's a really great idea. I would just like to see, just an electric homes, modular homes, double garages, but they can move, should be a little bit of restrictions, because that could either impact the spark of.
Oh, yeah.
It's like modular homes or.
Yeah, no, it's not going to be. We discussed that and it's submitted at the last meeting. Yeah, absolutely.
Along those lines, the board, they want to attach those graphics here to the contract.
Kevin James, Sunrise, New York, resident. You know, I've, I've been involved with this meeting and heard, we first all heard about next door and then also I've been hearing a variety of questions on the terms to residents. And it seems, it seems to me that the residents have an opportunity to work with Mr. Case and get some of the things that like we have, like we have some community center, um, lot or different things like this. So it, it just strikes me that this could be a win-win for residents that doesn't begin with getting some money, mostly Mr. Case. But, um, it seems that the board is, uh, gonna be a final vote. And again, we should go back and give the residents an opportunity to speak about what speaking with Mr. Case and, and, um, explain to him and what, what we would like to have, uh, up there that we can be of, of reason. There's one other comment on this. I know that also some residents have said, well, we want to keep it as it is and we're willing to increase our assessments in order to do that. But what we have never received from the board is, uh, a good idea of what we're going, what that assess, how that assessment is going to increase. And it seems that that would, this should be one thing that the board should give the residents is some good idea of our assessments of increase, so we can pay for the water plant and, and possibly still, uh, keep that piece of land or at least have some, some moderate boost. So I'm asking for, I think what I'm asking for is the chance to work with Mr. Case and see if we can have something that's gonna be agreeable to the board, to the residents in this.
We got somebody over here.
Hi, here to me, what I, I think, I've heard a couple things where, you know, the max of pay ourselves right around here. But I'm hearing that you guys have had discussions and agreed on things, but we haven't heard, I gotta hear more of your discussion and talk about what we kind of agree.
We didn't agree on anything. I'm not in a position to agree on anything.
This is all like pre-conversation.
Right. I just showed the ground. Right. Yeah, there were no agreements.
Yes.
Terry, you want to add some address comments to the board?
We, uh, we can hear you up here.
Yeah.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Lindsay, we just can't hear you.
The board cannot hear what's going on.
There we go.
Can't hear you.
Richtories.
There we go.
This way, or we're getting from the land. So, we got three million dollars up front. And then they're like, do you assume yourselves first block, or is it?
Yes.
Or is it both, like?
He's.
The first lot you sell, twenty thousand.
Right.
No, he's, he's paying upfront.
He's paying upfront.
And he'll get reimbursed when the house is gonna go.
No, the whole thing.
The whole thing.
That's, again, something that the offer didn't talk about times and I always. Where you would get the twenty thousand per block.
Yes.
I'm giving this note of reserve, so I'm just saying we can figure out what needs to happen, and that's what we're trying to do.
Right.
Well, also, we can't find a, uh, pretty much like guarantee.
For sure.
Right.
And another two reasons is over a period of cost, but we still.
Right, that's right, that's right.
That, that's still.
Right, that's still debatable, negotiable.
The board has to agree to financing those hundred ERCs.
Right.
And pay however, that, the price.
We have to agree on how we're gonna handle this two million, for, for clarification.
Initially, it said about twenty thousand dollars per unit, and then after sales, I can't, that's something we don't.
That's correct, right.
It's a, the original situation for everybody, we can't find any.
Right.
Well, my question is, you know, does he sell so many lots and then later?
He's not selling lots, they're building houses.
Well, building houses, but sometimes you have to go up to the three million, you might have to sell. They not open before the other, they was in a, one thousand dollars.
Uh, just a comment.
And running also say three houses are built, lots for a model.
I know.
We'll have the last time.
Uh, please get up. I've looked at the, it's a board feature.
Yeah.
Tony?
The mentor board.
Thanks for the comment. It's been received and reported.
Tony, here's to the record, because just for clarification, I'm looking at the contract terms and just wanna understand the whole idea about the ERCs, the reservation, the timing. Because right now, it says the purchase price, which is a three million, it includes reservation of a hundred ER, it says a hundred ERU ERCs. Uh, and that's really, once again, they blend the two together. We're only talking about reservation of ERCs. There's never any real reservation of ERUs.
Just it is what it is.
Yes.
If I can finish, so I'm just pointing out, that, that needs to be revised, because we're just talking about ERCs. It says no additional charge for one year. Then it says the buyer will pay the seller upon pickup of each building permit, for your home, the amount of twenty thousand for each ERC. So I guess, so for clarification is, that's why I'd like this to go back to the board. I know everybody's in a hurry, but we talk about transaction like this. Again, it gets back to what's the actual document say? What's the board actually signing off on? It says purchase price includes reservation, let's just say a hundred ERCs and no additional charge for one year. So the reservation is for one year.
Eric, do you have the new one?
I've got the one that was sent up.
Mike, Mike just passed out the new one and he did sit down with it, but if you look at page seven.
I've got that.
Okay, and it says buyer will pay seller, picking up each building.
Okay, yes. Lindsay, so you're the man. How do you see the, that getting paid? The twenty thousand per unit? How do you see?
I'm doing a bill roundhouse, twenty grand. See, financing on a new, oh, you can always include the twenty thousand dollars.
So when, on the building permit, not the occupancy permit, so when you go to build them, we get paid.
It's a billing.
That's all anybody's gonna do.
But the board has to, that has to be in the agreement.
Right.
Because these are reserving, uh, a hundred ERCs. And you have to agree to delay the payment for those.
Right.
Until the building permit.
That's correct.
You're still, what are you saying? You're still reserving a hundred ERCs.
Right.
And typically, they're paid right up front.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you're, you're a person, you need.
It has to be a length of time.
Well, again, for clarification, it says the reservation is only for one year.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, so I'm trying to show the reason on board.
But that, that's a detail that the board has to agree to.
Yes, I, I agree. That's why I'm raising it, Cal.
So do we wanna reserve a hundred for up to a year?
One year.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So wait, at the end of the year, at the end of the year, you have to pay or pay and pull.
Generally, the way this is written, and that's why I'm trying to get a sense, I'd like to come back to the board. It, and April fifteenth with the exact language, so avoid any confusion. It just says purchase price includes reservation, so about a three million, he's not only buying the land, he's buying the right to reserve a hundred, we'll get rid of the ERUs, ERCs.
Right.
For one year. And so.
Yeah. But it's when?
Okay, the reservation is just for one year. So after that point in time, he has no reservation.
Right.
Under the way this is written.
So that's.
I'm not sure if that's what he wants.
No, I think we need to say, every nature to be paid at the end of that year.
No, I think we say what he wants. Is that what you're saying? You're not sure that's what he wants?
Yeah, and it's confusing. So again, it's, it's pre-reserved.
Yeah, one year, there's gonna be either, I'll start paying, yes, maybe you could say you need to start taking them down. You've seen that before, where you take, you know, twenty-five or six a year.
No, Lindsay, the confusion in the offer is, uh, two things. Are you gonna pay for building permit or reserve a hundred for a year without anything?
Well, I thought, and you're getting you five minutes that I didn't, I was not, I came here.
But, but the five's not coming in all up front.
No, it's coming in, but you're getting.
Incrementally, so it's just, we're just trying to figure out how you wanna do it.
But then there's up to a year.
And I tried to run as if, um, an attorney could just do a legal distinction, because we got sixty days to tweak it all.
Right, but that's what we're trying, that's it.
That's why, you know, the kind of concern I'm working with me, I have sixty days. If in sixty days, you guys tell me, I want that and that and that, and then they tell me sixty days now, that's really what we're about to do.
Right.
No, no, the way it's written, we don't have the choice to tell him within sixty days. He has the choice to tell us what he wants within sixty days. So I'd like to get this clear up front.
Yeah.
So if it's a reservation for one year, that's fine. And if it's gonna be twenty thousand for ERC, that's fine. If the ERC payment we made, the twenty thousand a year, utility ERC, at the time of each building permit, that's fine. We need to clarify all that in here.
But what's the purpose of the year here?
That's what I'm trying to, yeah, I do too.
I think maybe that's part of his timeframe to get his development plans lined up. I don't know.
Well, he's, let's ask him, it's right here.
Okay, because I didn't understand your protocol.
Yeah.
And because I understand Russell's position on EQR. What I'm willing to just have you amend in the contract, Mr. Attorney, is I would be happy after a year to pay the four hundred thousand dollars of the EQR for a hundred units.
No, it's not that much.
It's twenty thousand per.
No, then you get the other sixteen thousand when the law closes. That way, at least you're getting totally whole on your.
So you're saying, if I hear you right, it's a year before you start building.
So what you're doing, you're gonna pay the tax fee, you're gonna pay the tax fee upfront.
No.
And then.
No.
ERC. He's gonna pay one or thousand of the two million dollars of utility ERCs for one of the units within one year.
Yes, he's gotta cover the bases.
And then the balance will be paid at the time of pickup of each.
Right.
Permanent.
That works, yeah, that works.
Uh, but one of them.
Keep in mind, Lindsay, the four thousand is money that whoever owns the home, when they start building.
Of course, it'll be signs, the lots. Remember, I'm wanting to totally connect your utilities to this plant, so you know there's not some.
No.
I mean, it's still getting mature.
Buying the house completed is what he's saying. All hooked up. So it's not individual building home.
This contract though.
It's what?
He wants to connect that to this contract, doesn't he?
In the initial provisions, that's done.
Well, the typical, as I understand it, based upon a hundred units. And, and again, I need to address that in just a second also, that there'll be a reservation of a hundred year utility ERCs for one year. At the end of one year, pays four hundred thousand dollars for the one hundred, basically at twenty thousand. And then at each time a building permit is picked up, the pro rata share per unit, which would be sixteen thousand per year, for ERC would be paid each time it picks up a building permit. That's how it gets, now the only question is, what if he doesn't get a hundred?
Right, right.
And so then we just need to address that too.
Yeah, when is the end of the timeline before we collect?
The end of the reservation.
The big amount.
That's correct. The four hundred thousand you give within a year, the balance will be as each year it comes online, or just from a building permit is picked up.
But there needs to be a, and, and, and the end date for that. In other words, you know, in other words, you can't have ten years from now, there's, they've only built fifty homes and we still have fifty.
I just don't know what reservation is for ERC. Makes sense to take.
We don't know.
Because we know this is gonna be gone in a year.
Yeah, but we want it right.
Yeah.
You got a pretty neat deal right here. I mean, I'm letting Ross get, he can sign it, and I've already got the money at the table. I spent.
Lindsay, when you, when you guys sell a house.
Yes, sir.
Do you build it for people individually, or do you build them and sell them built?
We usually find the high qualified builder and sell them three lot packages.
Yeah, and so they build three at a time.
Yes, sir.
And they sell them built.
Direct.
They're not custom.
Then I would do, I would do all the relationships about EQR, all that with them, because I've already solved your conversation.
Right, it's all done.
Through him, through your counsel.
Okay.
You know, what it sounds like is that this concept is he gets the entitlements.
Right.
And he has to like build it.
Right, that's what he got.
Building sells a package, there's a lot.
Yes.
So when they sell them, they're done. Okay.
But still an ending.
Yeah, so what's the end date for us to get all of them?
I mean, you know, it's maybe thirty-six months, right? Maybe, maybe sixty months. You're, you're asking me, is there a bubble?
No, we're asking you, we need to figure out the deal, so.
He knows the abilities to know how I can be bound practically and how, how just from his professional knowledge, I have no con, I have no concern that your community will draft the reply that's relevant. I can absorb anything you need, and in sixty days, if I see what you need, I go, that's it.
Maybe that thirty-six month is an ending.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so there's, there's two steps here. You've gotta reserve or pay for a portion of that water plant. Then it's the physical connection.
Correct.
And that's a total of twenty-four thousand dollars, however that's paid for. But your, it sounds like the board is agreeing to give you a hundred ERCs that's in this, and at some point in time.
A year.
You lose out, a year, okay.
If I buy a hog, why would I not own it forever?
No, no, he means when he.
No, he's correct.
I'll pay for it in a year.
Okay, that's what we need.
That's two million dollars within a year. The ERCs are, can't, can't, can't. He's sitting at the table now, I think the board was, the board can slap me if I'm wrong, is that there's a reservation for no additional consideration for one year of a hundred utility ERCs. At the end of one year, the developer pays a portion of it for the hun, so he pays four thousand dollars per, so he pays four hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And that takes care of four thousand for each utility ERC.
Whatever financial arrangement is made, there's two hundred and sixty-six ERCs. There's no more.
No, but they gotta be.
He's gonna take a hundred, okay.
Yeah.
But how long are you going to, if this, how long are you gonna reserve that hundred?
If I pay for.
He's paying for them at a year.
I hear two different things. I hear twenty thousand plus four thousand, and then I hear twenty thousand minus four thousand.
No.
And that's a big difference.
I think what's clear is that, that four thousand's off the table. That's, that's the connection fee that's happening.
Okay.
That's not. Yeah, this is utility ERCs, pure and separate.
All right.
So they're being reserved, because the connection fee is in the rates, fees and charges.
Right, as they get a C R.
Separate.
Also, Lindsay, would you show this to, is this, is this the home type that you are?
This was something my broker has identified, and I also, yes, of course.
But those are, that's the stuff.
It's just like similar stock product that you would have.
Right.
Again, if the board's concerned, Cal makes a good point. If the board is concerned that a hundred ERCs, utility ERCs would be tied up for an extended period of time, which would have an adverse impact on other development within the community.
That's what it is.
Then there might be a take, a mandatory takeout schedule for this. Then there might be a take, a mandatory takedown schedule for this.
Well, that has to be included.
No, I agree.
I thought the mandatory.
That's why I go back to.
But I thought the mandatory would be 36 months, the end.
Correct, that'd be totally taken out.
Paying.
And there is no time limit on the 4,000.
That's, that's totally, certainly. And that's not, that's not even in the contract.
Right, that's not even.
Go ahead.
And that's why I go back to, I don't mean, that's why I think this needs to be, come back to the board in April 15th.
I agree.
Okay, because of all this.
I agree.
So, but, so, but if there's a three-year takedown, mandatory takedown. Okay.
Okay, he agreed to that, so let's do that.
And at the end of the year is 400,000.
We'll go over the final, the 15.
Okay.
We have some more questions.
I can't.
Are we clear as mud?
Yes, I have not, like I said, when he drafts, I'll sign. Six games, there's another, there's another gentleman there with.
Yeah, go ahead, that's all right. You wanna do it?
When we heard from Denver, we did ask at the last meeting, did you come forward with a number of fall incidents? And I think so far, we're fourth to the next agenda. We never gave us any number, as to why it caused the recent difficulty here.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you a number off the top of my head, okay? Because we've discussed this before.
A lot.
It costs, uh, if we don't develop that, if that's not there and we keep it, it's seven, it's what, 750,000 a year out of the revenue cycle that we lose between O and M's.
That's just loss.
That, that's just what we lose every year by not maintaining that. So that amounts to, what is it, every hundred thousand dollars is 100 bucks rough and tough? So that means $750 onto your yearly tax bill.
The other thing is what we lose on undeveloped land, which isn't paid.
Yeah, then, then we, then you can divide the 3 million, 5 million over how many years you want.
Right.
And add that to it, so you're at a million dollars.
Plus you'd have to add more onto that for reserve, start building up.
It's, it's not pennies, it's a lot.
And we've got, we've got a, a, a tank back there that has to be repaired, that's half a million. And that, you know, that's, that's just one thing that just came up, just boom.
Yeah.
So there's some expensive stuff with that water treatment.
Just at the last meeting.
You had a million bucks.
We had a million bucks, one meeting. And the problem is the infrastructure is dated, it's aged. There's no help from the county, it all comes from the people in this room. Right.
But maybe all the building are reserves.
Right, there's also reserves.
But you've got, now you've got 100 homes paying that.
Cash flow.
So that's another, what, $200,000 a year?
Right.
Coming in on top of that.
So that money.
And water fees.
The one thing that we heard more than anything else for the past year is don't raise my taxes 10 cents. We heard that all the time.
Yeah.
Don't raise my taxes.
And can I say one thing, the condo owners, before we paid off the debt, they were paying more in assessment than they were real estate tax.
They still are.
And how do you sell when you have that imbalance? And if we go and tack more on.
It's the end of this place.
It's gonna be a nightmare.
The average condo in Orkut Cove, the Collier County tax this year is 850 bucks. The non-add valorem, after the discount we gave, is 1,750 dollars. It's more than double what the taxes are. And if you go up the road, they don't have that 1,750. So you're gonna get to a point, and we're dangerously close to it now, where it's not gonna sell. His fire tax, her fire tax, they have big homes, just the fire tax is 2,400 bucks a year. That's just the fire tax. I can't even imagine what their tax bill is. And there's a lot more expensive homes now. And they're paying, I mean, it's expensive.
Hopefully. It's up to the county.
Yeah, it's up to the county.
Steve?
No, ours is.
Over here?
Steve?
Oh, no, that's fire history. No, you stop.
I have a question. I have a question. A subject that near and dear my heart. Is the CID responsible for the stormwater drainage?
Yes, no?
So, okay, so the CID is responsible for putting in stormwater drainage?
That's not what, on the table right there.
No, no, typically, typically what's called the subdivision infrastructure improvements, the internal roads, subdivision, water, sewer, are put in by the developer.
Are you saying that here?
For the new home?
Yeah, no, no, developed home.
That's what we have for the whole.
Developed.
Now. The back, the backbone system is what the difference makes.
Right.
My second question is, looking at the plan, is there a way for the community to access that waterway now with the option to unside it?
We're not sure that waterway is legal, and we have to find out from South Florida Water. This used to be the Wild West, and there are actually two ramps out there. And as you know, it's a dead end down here at the Weir, and now it's a dead end up at the T. So it's like a lake. And the problem is, those are man-made dirt ramps. South Florida Water works for the county, they're under contract forever, and they have a six-foot buffer. And we never got an answer from them before, when we were trying to sell this land, the previous board, never got an answer about, will you allow us to own right to the water? And when I called them, I wasn't on the board, but it was taking too long. And they said, there's no way in hell that'll ever happen. But the ramps are there, so we have to find that out from South Florida Water Management. They have a six-foot buffer, and the county pays them to manage it.
We have one more, and then I think that will close it.
Yep.
Steve, you're in the booth. You got it right. First of all, just a very simple thank you for your participation, for listening to us. I appreciate that, thank you. To the board, at the meeting over there, the dividend is from a place. We've asked that you guys give us data. What is it gonna cost if we don't develop that land? And I don't want to hear numbers being thrown out like, oh, it's billion this. Do the analysis, please. The other part, if we do go forward with this, I assume that there's gonna be reduction in fees. Do that analysis as well. Give us the data so we understand how, how this decision is good. This shouldn't, in my opinion, should have been part of the process all along. And that's the bit, it's late, but please do it now, okay? Thank you. Just a request, you don't need to respond, just do it, please. Okay, thank you. The third thing, last, last question. They said this like.
I call the question.
All right, questions, we called. So I'll take a moment.
Yeah. Yeah. Now we vote. Yeah. All question meat, we're gonna vote now on the original motion that we.
Yes. All right, so.
The original motion that we had, and we're gonna turn it over to Tony and then figure it all. Yes.
You can come back at April 15th, I'd come back on April 15th.
Thank you.
Okay. All a favor?
Okay, four last questions. It looks like you're also interested in the hotel property as well. If you can take a comment on that property. Are you ready to do so much thinking or?
Yeah, that helps so much. What's next?
Next item would be the. That would be the 162, 163 Sunset Basin.
Okay. Okay, next order of business?
Yes. The situation is that the east of St. Felden, the pipe's been poured in. You had tabled any decision to do anything. And still proceeded. So we, the code enforcement? Uh, and.
Go ahead. The county engineer.
Go ahead.
There had been question raised the last couple of days whether or not the case, the code enforcement case had been dismissed. And we received some word that preliminary that was gonna be dismissed. We had a conversation with the county engineer, and he's gonna be rescinding that, and the case is gonna be remain open at this point. He's determined that based upon the information he received, which was limited, he, he had thought maybe the case could be closed, but now it can't because there's potentially a permit issue, and there's also the violation of the easement.
And then Tony had received, and it was forwarded, I forwarded to you, Tony had received a copy of the, or it's, received a letter from the property owner's attorney, and one stack happened to that. So I, I don't know what you want to say on that one.
Uh, I disagree with the assertion made by Mr. Neal. Interestingly enough, at the time when he sent the letter, the code enforcement had closed the case. Case is not closed. Again, we think the determination made by the code enforcement staff was based upon what information they were providing at the time. So we had the conversation to give them sufficient additional information. Furthermore, on the assertion of selective enforcement, the case cited by Mr. Neal, these deals with property owners associations, not with governmental bodies. And the fact that there may not have been, in the past, actions taken to protect the district's easement, in my opinion, does not preclude the district on a full forward basis, to ensure that the district system works and that there are no encroachments in district systems that must authorize. So we may have further conversations, I'm sure, on that, I'll respond to Mr. Neal, if the board thinks it's appropriate.
And I guess the status of it right now is that you, the board had a request on your agenda, I think two meetings ago. The engineer had recommended against approval of that. You have to give some type of approval to the applicant, the homeowner that petitioned for, to come up with an agreement where they could use your easement. You tabled that, so staff's position is you have given us no direction on how to proceed other than to protect your easement, which is what we've done.
I got a question for you. When was Irma?
Seventeen, September 10.
What have we done to protect the homeowner's drainage system since then?
Other than you've cleaned, you've had contracts for maintenance, cleaning out around the storm catch basins. We had all of the items that were privately installed, that was creating blockages.
You mean plants, plants, you mean plants?
Yeah, there was, there was not just plants, there was structure.
If we've been, my instructions also to make sure that they are compliant with what the, the design for the cell water system was, best that we can.
Is, is I put in the thing before, there's six culverts on Stellamaris South.
Stellamaris South is not a responsibility of the CID for their drainage system, that's part of their master association.
Right. That's not ours.
That's us. If you, if you do have a violation that you know, you may want to call code enforcement and inform them at that time.
Well, I don't know if it's a violation, I just wonder why the culverts were there, there's two on Sunset, and there's six there. So it's just, you know, I mean, I don't think we've done enough to protect the properties. That's why this gentleman did what he did, because he, I, he thought he needed to protect his property. People may not like, like his design that's there, but so far, I don't know, well, you said there's a permit issue? What's a permit issue? What, on that property, what is it? I know, but what is it?
The, the city, I'm sorry, the county engineer at this point, because of the code enforcement case that's pending, he's looking at it, and he's gonna make a determination, and he's kinda made a preliminary determination already that there is a permit that's gonna be required because it affects the primary drainage system of the district.
Who determined that, who, who determined that it affects the drainage?
Well, if I could, I think part of it is, there's, I understand it, I'm not the engineer. Take David's role for a second, is that that drainage easement is approved to be a drainage swale. That's, in terms of drainage swales, we all know is for water quantity and water quality. And the builder applicant property owners filled in the swale so that prevents it from acting as the conveyance that's intended to do this. That's contrary to the district's approved plans, and, and also interferes with the district's easement. And then also there were great papers on top. The county engineer wasn't so concerned about the papers, but was concerned about filling in of the swale. That that's an improvement that should have been permitted, it was not on a permit, as part of a site approvals. That's my recollection, David, from our conversation with Jack McKenna. And also installing a conveyance structure and filling in the swale was the activity that needs to be permitted from the county. And it's in the district easement, so it needs the district's approval. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, so if he gets the permit?
No. Well, the district would have to authorize.
We still have to approve. Right, but if he gets the permit, then we have that option, right? If you don't think it's a permit, then you can't.
No, the county will say, I, I assume the county may say, permit issuance subject to obtaining approval before the ILC ID. I mean, what they've been doing with the docs, what they've been doing with docs right now is before they will issue the permit, they actually want the approval of the district. Similar to what's going on with generators, pool equipment, spa equipment, easements.
Now, can I say something? I, I live on that block. I have never had a water issue. This year was the first water issue at the cul-de-sac when the new homes were being built. And several times, I would say that the problem was all the sand from the construction was blocking the swale. And then next thing I know, this happened, what have they done really? You dug deep, you put a pipe in, why couldn't the swale be clean or dug deeper? Why did this pipe go in other than to level the ground to extend the driveway?
Yeah, if I recall correctly, part of the discussion, the asserted basis also was, when they got out in the field, the topos were not performed. When the builder got out in the field sort of building, it realized a corner of the house was close to the swale, and they were concerned about subsidence. In my humble opinion, that's something that's a design issue on the building.
And my concern now is, we haven't seen rain. So I know this works.
So drought.
I don't know it worked, it has a pond beyond it.
The other thing that's changed though, since the thing was designed, how many feet up have these houses had to move?
Oh, I understand that, in fact, behind one house, you have a retainer wall, which makes that wall is higher than the, the water wall. And I worry about it going over that wall now, but, but the thing is, we don't know if it works. We don't know if that swale would have worked.
If the elevation changes, it's affected many houses in the, in development over the last couple of years. And this apparently is the only one that did not take that into consideration with the site layout.
All right, here's a, here's, I have a, this question that'll go to Tony. Is it possible for us to have some sort of legal agreement between the owners of both properties to allow them to keep the swale the way it is now? But if Southwest Florida management comes down and says, nope, they would be responsible to remove it? If there is any problem that develops from that, if that swale, or not swale, but for the, what they did to it, if anything happens, basically, they take it over and leave us out of it? In other words, we would, we would allow that to stand, but if anything happens, the two of them would be responsible for any fines, any regrading, any changes, the, the maintenance of it? Can we do, can we legally do that to allow them to keep that swale there and get us out of the situation?
Uh, we won't be out of it, we'll be in it, it's just a matter of enforcing. It's a persuasive discussion that the board was authorized entering into a non-disturbed or encroachment agreement that would allow the, the pipe filling in the swale to remain. agreement that would allow the, the pipe filling in the swale to remain, subject to its removal on request of the district and the district does, and if the person doesn't remove it, the district can remove it and then charge the person. That becomes an enforcement issue because then we could be in battle for two or three years to get him to move it out and then recover money. Secondly, there's also the South Florida Water Management District consideration that to what extent would any warranty guarantee on part of the property owner to pay any fines, consent decrease, service fees, engineering fees associated with any enforcement action or non-compliance action of South Florida would say, you can't do that, you need a modification. So then who's going to pay for the modification? And then what does that do? I mean, is there a need to, we've got, I think the board made it clear, it may, it's a good idea to relook at the entire water management system as a whole, right? Number one, forward rank, and it's number two, four possible recommendations as to whether you want to retrofit, modify, and those things aren't cheap. Okay, they, and, and they're not easy.
More money.
They're not overnight.
And plus, there's another cul-de-sac that has a worse problem. We didn't have a problem on Sunset, okay?
Yeah, and, and I guess the concern I have is also if, if this pipe exacerbates the water conditions on there, oh, we're going to have claims from other property owners, then under the agreement, we would go to these property owners and say, you pay for it, and then they'll say, oh, it's got nothing to do with our project, you approve it. My concern is that opens up more opportunities for litigation and problems as opposed to two property owners to come into compliance. And that's, and again, I, this also occurred without them coming to the board for approval.
Oh, yeah.
So that's, that, and, and, but I think there's more risk in where this stands right now than opportunity or benefit from the district.
More risk in allowing?
Yes, even within a given place, because then you have to enforce the agreement.
That's the key, the enforcement.
Right, you mean, you mean them saying that they would remove it if there was a problem? It's not good.
Correct, because a lot of people will say, well, no, because they'll find reasons with a stall where they'll litigate. I, I'm looking at the boogie manner approach, I've had many agreements where people say, yes, I will do A, B, and C, and then you ask them to do it, they'll say, no, you know what? You were wrong district or it was a bad agreement.
So what happens seeing, uh, how many houses have been built on that street since the last drainage season?
Six or seven.
So it's a whole new, it's a whole new ballgame there anyway.
Yeah, it's the whole block, not just the end.
It's not just going to be bad. The whole thing is different, so.
But the swales should all be there regardless, correct?
But yeah, the, yeah, the swales, the, the swales and so forth, drainage improvements are there. There, there is a need for maintenance and ongoing maintenance, and it's something that probably occurs.
And we do have that obligation, I think that this is very clear, the district has the obligation to maintain.
Because one of these county has the swale deeper than like my home, so we, we probably have to make them all the same depth.
Yeah, they're all supposed to be same depth.
Yeah.
All right, let's go, that's, all right, let's say that we vote as a board, say, keep, cease and desist, we tell them to go ahead and, and re-put it back the way it was. Okay, and I asked this question to Joe the last time. Is there another solution for the homeowner in 163 to get a CO if he cannot have the five feet of whatever he's supposed to have at that one quarter, which is encroaching over easement? And Joe said there was no other solution.
I might be incorrect, but there is a variance process with the county building code?
No, but I think the, the issue is, your, my understanding is corners were reset. I mean, isn't there something already built there or not?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's like.
It's there.
I mean, it's the end of the building, the house is.
So David, the variance is not an issue, is it?
It's too late.
Yeah, you can't, it's not an issue of county setbacks anymore, it's an issue of topography as I understand.
Well, it may be a condition of the building code itself, because the building code has certain requirements that you have a flat area before you start down.
If you compute that. No, I know, but I guess, they don't compute. It's not, it's not like it's a building code issue, it sounds like a site condition issue that's too close to the swale.
It's that also.
So it's not, it's not building code or zoning ordinance. I guess the question is, could the developer build a retaining wall portion and, and then the district allow construction of a retaining wall to provide the owner's support to that portion of the house and then maintain the swale as it's designed?
Correct, that, that, that's a, that's an option that's available to the homeowner is.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, for example, Sam's thinking of solutions.
Yes, that's what I'm buying, right? Get a solution.
If the concern is about lateral support to that portion of the house.
Right.
It sounds like that's the issue.
Or they, or they could do some retrofit and put down a stem wall to serve that purpose.
Yeah, so there, there might be an engineering solution to allow, to allow a minimum encroachment into the drainage easement so that there could be a retaining wall or additional stem.
Is there an engineering solution?
Well, the old joke is, uh, nothing's impossible, just expensive.
So the key is providing lateral support to that portion of the wall. That's what I heard last time.
And, and make sure that it's, it's not subject to underwriting in the future.
Right.
If there is a retainer wall on the backside of the house, this is close to the swale.
And see, a lot of the construction, yeah, in the, down in the case, do use stem walls and so forth because they're planted right up against the drainage.
Right.
I, see, the, um, the, the swales, the swales aren't symmetrical, right? They're not all the same. Everybody's swale is different in the back.
Right.
Because of all the variations, right?
Right, what the property lines, what you.
Right, so it's really hard to get the volumes right for what those swales will hold, because they're all different.
Right.
Even though they're supposed to be in a perfect world, perfect.
Right.
But we're getting this water in the, in that, uh, drainage at the end there, that's moving the water to the swale. And the swale size is fine. You're talking about, uh, you talk about water quality and, uh, just a short run that's there. I don't know how many feet it is, 12 feet or whatever. And, um, you're talking about water quality. If they were worried about water quality, they would have limited the size of the houses and the footprints that these houses have, because the amount of permeable space is very limited and it's not controlled. And now all of a sudden, we're worried about a little strip. I, I just don't get it, because we're going to get that water to the swale more efficiently than it was before. We had the engineering study from somebody that showed that it only handled 11-inch rain is this tube, so.
Now, now, I'm, I'm going to hold back any kind of review of that little because it wasn't done by part of the E. And if you, if it's time to seal documents, then they're worthy of review.
The whole point was from the beginning, that was, we're putting, you're putting huge homes on postage stamped plots. And as I said this last time, the horse is out of the barn and he's running in the middle of the field because we have no control, no review over any of this from the county. And now it is plopped in our lap. And guess who's going to be the bad guys here? The five of us. And we're not the bad guys, we didn't do this to begin with. That's the whole point of this whole discussion.
But the county does have review.
The county has review, but David doesn't have review as far as our swales and everything else. That has never, that's never happened.
When the county, county receives a past building from a package shop from a builder here, what they do is they make sure the setbacks are met and that they're not approaching into the easements themselves. They, they don't really look at how that, that volume, the water quality span came back in that swale, how the returns are done or anything like that. They just say, you're not, you're not in an easement, you're okay.
But they are.
I thought they.
But it is an easement, right?
No, they, they, until this one, the building itself was not an easement, the building itself. Getting back to the concept of, is there a possible solution? And again, I, I, I think if you put the owners, on the property owner to say, okay, we recognize the house as where it is, you all indicate there's a lateral support subsidence issue. Could you come up with an engineered solution for Florida P E that would provide for the minimum intrusion into the drainage easement? And then the board look at it and say, okay, we recognize that, well, we will allow the encroachment of this retaining wall into a portion of the drainage easement and return the rest of that drainage easement to the swale. So you have at least the conveyance coming off of that driveway and everything else into the swale to go back to the system, right? That's something I think.
We, we can look at it as a package deal of, of what we're going to allow in that, in that easement, as long as you're making up for the water quality that potentially is lost somewhere.
Well, there's two issues off here, and they're getting blended together. One issue is you've got property rights, that's your easement, and it's been built in and driveway's been built over. And so you weren't given the opportunity to see if, or at least you weren't given the opportunity quick enough, uh, to see if that's going to be acceptable. David did a very, yours was a preliminary review, uh, you, you submitted to the board and review and you recommended it, yes.
But he, he did not, he recommends denying it.
Right.
And I put a motion out to just defer it, you know?
Yes.
For a later view.
And, and I hope.
The overall drainage and the other one is this specific issue.
The violation.
That your easement has been filled in and somebody's built a driveway out.
Now, didn't you tell me, did I see a letter recently, like the past 20 minutes, that South Florida Water was coming out for a visit?
Actually, I, I copied you an email to South Florida, I have communications with them, and they're hopefully coming out next week to start looking into saying they want to do some internal research themselves, get ready with the project again.
I thought we said not to. I thought there was a directive, not to contact.
That's what we're waiting on.
And, and Ray, you know, he would be interested in meeting with South Florida, so that's why I copied it on the email.
Because right where that is, is, is the let out into the canal.
That's the whole problem with the whole thing. They not allowing it.
I think a look at the entire situation, the case especially, I did send them information about other parts of the community that, uh, how I believe that there's some areas that have been committed by higher county, the SDP process and other portions that do have Southwater permits, so don't be taking a look at the whole community.
So can't we wait and have Southwest Florida Water look at this and see what they say?
I'll, I'll, I'll turn to Tony a little bit, but you know, yeah, I guess you could table this again and come back to it at a later day.
It's already there and, you know, if they say it's okay, if Southwest Florida.
That would be the first step. That would be the first step.
Yeah.
See if South Florida Water Management District says that it's compliant with existing permits?
Okay, but that, that's a question, yes, but what they were asked to do at the direction of the board was to look at the entire drainage system.
Right.
And that's like specific.
Right, the whole thing.
Because I don't know if they'll come out, because they're not in the permit process. You have a permit, you, the CID, you have a permit that has been impacted. And, uh, so you want to see how, what the, the South Florida, they're the permit issuer, what they think.
Right, and that's the first step, is to find out what their opinion of it is, basically.
Yeah.
And the next step would be, be county engineer, he'll just, he'll get re-engaged with this again, and then it's up to you all to decide whether you're going to allow the encroachment into your easement.
I think we need more information to get a decision, and they're tabled.
I believe, I believe when we tabled it the last time, we tabled it with that, that number one, we were going to have the county take a look at it, which was supposed to happen last Friday. And number two, we were going to have Southwest Florida Management take a look at it and say, yeah, it'll work or no, it won't.
Or you haven't worked any affirmative hot, or you haven't worked any.
That's correct.
Totally affirmative hot.
So we're, we're in that process right now.
I mean, it's been a month, I mean, and we also had another guy come who's had all these blowouts, and maybe this is the answer, you know? But we don't, but we don't know, we don't know that.
Right, they've got to look at it.
And, and at the end of the day, if the board's inclined, assuming you mark all the boxes that David says engineering wise it works, South Florida says it's not violating the permit, it's okay, uh, and there's no other issues with it, it's still, they.
Still are.
The property owners still need to get the board's approval because who's going to operate, maintain that? If it becomes part of your system, the property owner is going to argue that it's yours and you're going to say, no, it's not ours. If anything goes wrong with it, you need to take care of it. So I mean, there's a lot of steps to get to before you get to that point. But I, I would suggest, they would probably say, don't accept that actual conveyance, because then you're going to have to maintain it in the future.
Yeah, we, we really do evaluate the future maintenance of that thing. It's, it's fine that a homeowner would say, yeah, I'm going to maintain it, but during that big storm, who's going to maintain it?
During a big storm, who maintains all the culverts around?
Right.
Nobody's out there in the storm.
I think the elephant in the room is that there's been a history of people doing whatever they want, no enforcement. This is the latest case, but not the only one. And somebody did whatever they wanted without our approval. So we need to come up with something with more teeth that if that ever happens again, it gets shut down and there's no F C N to bust.
In this case, actually, it came before the board, before they actually put in the hard improvements and it were told, cease, don't do it.
But they did it anyway.
They did it anyway.
That's known as a sly.
Rules are rules.
Right, and you can't, if we don't stop that practice, do whatever you want, who the hell cares? You can't operate like that. You can't, the county doesn't operate like that, nobody operates like that. And you can't allow it, you can't, because sooner or later, neighbors are going to be at each other. You just can't allow that. You can't do what you want, when you want to do it, and say the hell with that.
No, it's, something can be done with the county where we could review plans before, but we have, we, being the CID, we're staff, we're professionals, have no say in building.
None.
That's why I brought that up.
So if they're, if they're put in a higher elevation than the system can handle, we don't know that.
And we inherit it. But what happens now, we inherit this swale problem for the whole place. And we are obliged to fix it, once these houses are done. Once that's done, what's that going to cost people in this room? I have a number in my mind and I'm not an engineer, and that's not in the CIP report either.
Some, some of those drainage costs were included, but it's getting bigger and bigger.
So more money.
Yeah.
The previous, and I believe this was identified in Ron's history.
Right.
But the previous responsibility for maintenance of those was established by the old board that it was the homeowner, kind of like up north where you've got sidewalks and you've got to shovel that white stuff, yep, that is the responsibility of the homeowner. Is it still? Uh, down here, I, nobody's changed it, it's still.
Yeah, I just told it, it's my responsibility.
So then the swales are the responsibility of the homeowners?
Right, but they can't alter or change that.
Right.
They're just supposed to maintain.
Because of South Florida Water.
Right.
They're the ones that call that shot. So if they say it's okay, then the homeowners can do it.
Well, they can follow that.
I don't think South Florida cares who maintains it.
They care what dumps into the canal.
Right, they do.
And that's the end.
But you as a CID are responsible for maintenance, but the previous boards have always said it's the homeowner's responsibility.
Is it a liability?
If, if something went to court, the, uh, the city or the county or whoever would be responsible for liability or anything else. But they have an order that signs that, that the homeowner has to shovel that sidewalk or they'll go through and they'll make them repair a broken sidewalk or trip hazards or whatever.
Do we have that?
No.
Okay, that doesn't matter.
Yeah, you don't, well, you can't adopt or.
No.
You can adopt a rule, right.
Right. But so right now, that doesn't happen. So back to what, South Florida Water, according to you, tells us how much water can go into the canal from the swales and the drains, whatever you want to call it. Right now, we have a big problem with a whole bunch of them. So until they say we can increase that volume or not, we are stuck with these problems of flooding, am I right?
Right.
So until they come and give us an assessment on all of them, and then it lands on us, and then it's a million bucks or whatever it is to have it done, so we can dump more water in the canal properly, our hands are tied.
It is probably not going to be dumping more water in the canal. They're going to say.
There you go.
How about some alternative methods of providing the required storage?
Which is even more expensive, which is what you told before, like purchasing.
Yeah. Purchasing property. Cars getting very, very creative as far as doing some treatment of the water through mechanical devices, filters and all that kind of stuff.
But then the problem is purchasing the, the property. All of those properties involved are like this, there's no property to buy. So. So then is there an eminent domain feature? And if there is.
Yeah, you, I think the first course would be to look for that most vacant properties and try to require those. Hope, there may need to be a change in the overall drainage system. Right now, only the case drive utilizes the lakes, all the rest of the drainage uses the rigard, uh, swales and so forth. There may be the potential of modifying the permits to interconnect the, the case itself, the Sunset, Venus, and so forth, into the system that serves with the lake system.
The retention plot.
The retention plots.
That you maintain now.
Right.
On the east side of Case Drive.
Three of them.
Three of them.
Yeah, there's three of them, and there are some open lots along that side too that are probably lowering costs.
And I, I don't know if we, you or Ron ever looked at those unbuildable lots at the end of Case Drive, that they could probably, yeah, build on it, maybe drain off of the swamp there. That's a, that's a low wetland.
It's a low wetland, but again, it's a wetland, it's going to happen, where it's going to happen.
Qualified before it was in there. All right, I have one other quick question, Tony.
Yes, sir.
All right, if we table this again, which is slightly with blue, does, since there is a cease and desist order on this, um, will this prevent Mr. Metz from getting his CO to be able to move in to the property?
The cease and desist order by itself is not the county indicating there might be a code violation? Yes.
And so what, so I'm clear, what are the steps to get him into his house now? What are the steps that have to be taken?
Take it out.
Take it out, or what's the other?
Is there another alternative?
Is there an alternative?
We have to give him permission to get the permit, if it's a variance.
I think there's probably two paths. The first path would be the homeowner coming up with an alternative building plan in order to.
For that.
Make the need for the, the drains in that area, and taking it out. The, the other way is to go through the process of finding out what South Florida will allow, finding out what the county will allow, and getting approval from the board to allow him to use that, to close that swale.
Okay, those are the two choices.
Those are two paths.
The Southwest Florida one is going to be months, it's not going to be, I would think.
Yeah.
That would be months before they're going to make a determination.
Yeah, that task is going to probably be a little bit more complex.
So it sounds to me like the other one is take it out. Have another engineering solution for the problem.
Right, and, and again, somebody suggested the use of retaining wall or something like that, and then.
On the house or on the, on the swale?
Well, two things, you can look at setting a step wall down to protect it, or, or putting a retaining wall in and still retain the, the ability of the swale to serve, and also retain water quality. And then we could look at, going into a high disagreement to allow that to happen.
Okay. My understanding from Joe when I talked to him before about that was, from the end of that building, it's supposed to be five feet of dirt to be able to hold that building. There was only two and a half feet. You then hit the bar swale, I mean, yeah, arc and easement. So there would have to be a, a wall there at two and a half foot mark.
Right.
That would permit it to hold, that would be designed to hold that back.
Yes. There, it's been a while since I got to the part of building, oh, there is some requirements about so many feet off the edge of the building, you have that flat surface before you started return to grade.
Do we have to speak, Matthew? Any more comments?
No.
Any audience comments, Joe?
Yes, I'd like to clarify a few points. Uh, to do a retaining wall, we would be in the easement again, and that retaining wall would probably be above five or six feet high. So it would be pretty much a cliff off that wall into the drainage. That opens up a whole bunch of other liabilities. Okay, there is already problems, these houses have been raised two feet, three feet. If you take the time to look at the property, we have this issue in the back of property and other areas of the property where it is a cliff. So that is also in the easement of, uh, CID, which is another liability, because everywhere it's a three feet to one foot slope, we have here, one feet, three feet, it is a cliff. It's unlikely, you can't cut the grass, somebody's going to hurt themselves, either walk around. Solution we came up with was an engineer. Granted, he's not an engineer in the state of Florida, but he is an engineer, he still has the knowledge, mathematics, mathematics around the world. A liter of water here is a liter of water anywhere else in the world. So this fact that it doesn't have a license here to be required, he still has the intelligence and the know for all on what to do. So what we did there is we put in a one foot pipe, we caught the exact same thing that is on the further up on the street, and the water is still flowing, flowing through. We have not stopped the water from going through before, exactly stopped, and that's why it will back up. And that's what happened a month ago. Now the water has flowed into a open section where there is water, the water is still being held over there, it's still seeping through and filtering. Southwest Florida, when they come here and see some of the situations on other streets where the water is being dumped directly into, uh, canals, that will be an issue and will be possibly fixed, but that will come up on a later date. Um, as of yesterday, and, and last meeting we had, the counties, other than the CID members, let's sit with the county has to say. We did what you asked, we had the county come, had the head engineer of your county look into it, somebody was there, and as yesterday, at 1:55 PM, we were receiving emails saying that no permit is required, and that everything is okay with the county on what we did. We didn't obstruct the water, we made it flow better, the water now sits, drains, and does exactly what this design was made to do. This design was done thirty years ago. It doesn't work, as you get many complaints from other homeowners here, it does not work. This situation will work, it's true, we haven't had the rainy season, we will have it soon, and we will see. The homeowner wants a solution to the problem, he's put a lot of money and investment into the house. If that situation does not work, then hopefully somebody will come up with a better solution. But retaining walls, those are cliffs, those are bigger liabilities for the CID than what is there now. Now, we should walk across the one ever. And this only happens at the end of the streets of every case drive, because there's a template that's been over there, and the water from the front, back of the street that'll go from the bridge to houses to hit the back. So it doesn't exist anywhere else except for the end of the street, which is why Frank has the same situation, because he is in exactly the same house position as Mr. Metz's house. And that's why he has the problem, having problems for years now, and coming to the CID, and still has not had any solutions or anybody. I invite all of you guys to come see what we did at Mr. Metz's house, and I can't see anybody saying that this is going to be a problem, because if you look at the solutions that are coming up here now, that will be a problem, that will be a liability. Somebody will fall off a cliff and hurt themselves. A lawnmower guy, a grandson, somebody's going to get hurt, and that property is CID. I don't know how else. We got permits, the house is there, everything is legal, we did all our inspections, we got final inspection, uh, yesterday, we're good. We got an email from the county, they're good with it, no permits required, so I don't see a situation other than yes, you did not ask permission, or you had to act before rainy season. And now they're going to punish it because you didn't get permission, that's you guys, but solutions there, and hopefully the solution can be copied, right, the problem, because it's not that expensive, fixed, and it does fix it. So I get to invite you, come and see what you did. aesthetically, it looks good, and it works very well, very, very well. Right now, there's no water. I have pictures of my street where we have a same problem, hasn't rained in forever, but there's four inches of rain over there, water. What's wrong? From the sprinklers, from vehicle sprinklers. Can you imagine if you have four inches of water, your whole side of the street is filled up, only through sprinklers? Doesn't rain, but there's water there right now. Take a drive on, uh, on, on Woodward Street, you will see two puddles of big water, four inches deep, at the exact same spot, why? Because why can't go? Water doesn't go uphill, it's physics, does not go uphill, it sits there and it has the rain, it's just from the sprinklers. So imagine when we get the rains, I can't get out of my street when you've got a heavy rain, because it's a lake today. No solutions, been discussed forever, no date, nothing. I haven't seen anything, I haven't heard anything, and Mr. Frank, he's here again today, everybody was, yes, last time, we will help you, we will do something, we will do everything. He hasn't even gone to the phone call, the engineer hasn't called, open the phone, again, yes, we're going to do everything for you, now they're chest, we have to do something for our community. He's still waiting.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Question I, if the retaining walls put in, it's not the CID's?
Well, that, I'm not sure there's an agreement.
Yeah, what I'm saying, no, what I'm saying is, it's not our liability if somebody falls off that retaining wall.
Yeah.
The retaining wall would be on the property of the property owner.
Well, as long as the retaining wall is on the property owner's side of the easement.
Then it's his responsibility.
Responsibility, and that's essentially being mitigated by putting up railings and so forth.
No, no, no.
There's a retaining wall on the back door.
The point I was making was saying that, that, that the, it would be responsi, the responsibility would be the CID's for any accidents there, and it's not, it would be actually the homeowner's insurance that would have to be.
Right.
We would be.
Yeah, and if I may follow up on that too, if the board was inclined to approve encroachment into the easement to take care of this issue, then part of that agreement requires property hold the district harmless, which also requires the area insurance, to name the district as additional insured. And I guess just to clarify the record, uh, I know, I believe you mentioned at 1:30 email, I think you all got to 3:30 email from Tyler County, that the co-enforcement officer said the case has not been closed.
Right.
I was waiting for further clarification from the complainant's point of view, I will have investigator, a sorrow issue, no violation, NOV based on the scene. That was at 3:30, that's just to verify the word.
You, you said that you could have insurance, you could make them carry insurance?
It's part of an enclosure, yes.
Could we make them carry insurance on, uh, repairing any damage if there's a problem with that? But what, what's there?
Difficulty, with security, we have a permit issue in South Florida, it's not just any damage.
Well, no, I mean, if we can install that.
We could include all harmless for anything and everything that's caused by the soon forsaken discussion in South Florida, and says it's okay.
Right.
And say the board says, okay, you keep that item in there, okay, you're going to maintain a property or provide this insurance, hold this harmless, that could all be part of it. It's a lot of yeses, but.
That's what I mean towards that, I, I've seen on, it looks good, I agree, and we haven't even tested it, I'd like to get through rainy season and see what.
And then, then, then the issue becomes the future. If any other person wants to install that same type of system, we would need to have a basis to say, everything is ad hoc, it's an ad hoc determination, would be based upon the specific site conditions for any other property. Nope, under Florida law, each piece of property is unique, it's a matter of law, so you have unique circumstances for each everybody, so.
Well, that's good. Cal, let me ask you a question, because I haven't been down there, I don't live down there, but let me ask you a question. Forget this one for a second. And I'm, I don't know about anybody else, I'm sick of spinning our wheels. And we're spinning our wheels, it's noon again, I've heard this a million times. Mr. Frank's thing is different. Now, I just have a simple question, I want to revive it. You're Mr. Frank, you've got a real problem. What are the next steps? Because Joe said he hasn't even gotten a phone call. So what I need to know is, what is going to happen next, and when is it going to happen?
Did Joe contact everybody else? Never contacted?
No, no, I mean this one.
Oh, I thought you meant.
Uh, I, like I say, there's two different issues. One is the, the encroachment in your easement, what do you want to do?
Right.
The other is your, your overall stormwater management system in that area. David is meeting with South Florida Water Management yesterday.
Which is what I said, right.
And then, once he knows what can or can't be done, then he's going to put together some plans and recommendations that you guys could consider, and will, uh, we're going to get dealt.
So that's what we're waiting on now with Mr. Frank's problem. Now, do we have a firm date on that yet?
No, we don't have a date with South Florida, so it's going to be here.
When he comes, can he be there? Mr. Frank? Can he be there when they're talking to us?
Sure, now, help, help me, Mr. Frank.
Is that, that's you?
When we're there.
He's the one that's had all the flood.
Okay, 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 good, good.
But when are you going back? Okay, so can he be there, so?
Sure, you know, the, the problem may not be related, you know, directly to the water management system.
I know, but he's, he's got a problem, and I understand the frustration. I think he should be there.
Sure.
And he can hear what they've got to say, because it's time to get the backhoe up. So we need to get this figured out. There's other problems as well, these are the two on the front burner. The other one is, it sounds to me, and I haven't been down there, I don't know where it is, it sounds to me like it either gets allowed, or they have to have a Florida engineer tell us it's okay. Am I right? Are those the two answers?
Well, they, they got to come up with a solution.
Okay, they got to come, and what if they say, not, what if they say, no, this is a good solution, then it's over, right?
It's got to get approved by the county.
Okay.
At this point, it's got to be approved by us and the board.
So he needs an engineer, Florida, then he needs it approved by the county, then it comes by us, and we would certainly approve it.
No, 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 you have to have the Southwest Florida.
We got to get them involved.
They have to be involved, because they're the ones that own the permit on this swale.
And the county can't tell them or you that that, whatever is being proposed is a sub.
It's going to be a three, three party type thing, but.
The CID and the, the Southwest Florida water.
So what I'm hearing, so this doesn't come up again next month, or the fifteenth, because it isn't, it will, it's getting, but it's got to be, look, what's the bottom line?
Let, let us remember too, that there are other houses that are currently being built that are close to these easements at the end of the streets, that have taken this into account.
Right.
And the pipeline hasn't allowed for that easement to exist.
Okay.
This is, this is one of those spaces where proper planning didn't happen.
Right, but we are trying to find a solution.
Right, right.
The engine will be, we're damaged, we do.
That's okay.
We don't.
Just a statement, you keep trying to define decent power, the man's been having a problem for years. Did he get your approval when he had a blowout in the back of the repairs? No. Did he take care of it and suck that up and eat that? Yes. So I don't understand, I'm just other resident, that's where you're coming from, saying this is apples and these are oranges, they're all apples?
I think what Cal was saying though is, previous boards, which we can't speak for previous boards, but we were on. We've only been on a year and three months. Previous boards have always said that the, the maintenance on the swales is the responsibility to the homeowners, which would make it the responsibility of Mr. Frank to take care of his own swale. The maintenance, but not the construction, the construction. What we want to do is find out from Southwest Florida, et cetera, what needs to be done to the entire system that is legal with Southwest Florida, because people, the reason that you were allowed to build here in the first place is because Southwest Florida came up with this plan, whether you like it or not, on how to allow the water.
Because people, the reason that you were allowed to build here in the first place. Is because Southwest Florida came up with this plan, whether you like it or not. On how to allow the water from the streets, et cetera, to go into the blocking unit canal without in, uh, injuring the ecological system here. That's the reason here in the first place.
Right.
That can actually be updated with the new place coming in. To clarify, South Florida did not come up with the plan.
Somebody else.
Somebody else.
Somebody else did.
And Southwest Florida said, yes.
The real problem, the real problem here, because you're new and a lot of people don't get this. Port of the Islands, that side of the road, this was a field over here. That side of the road was first owned by a company called Gulf America Corporation. And there was a runway over there and they flew D C threes in and they went to the two different hotels. And this was the playground for Golden Gates Estates, which is going to be a new city. If you're from the north, you used to hear, you want to buy some swampland in Florida. That was this. So. That all, they fell apart. The county inherited. Then individual developers took little tiny pieces of it on that side of the road. This was a field and they did whatever the hell they wanted at the time. That's what left this mess. You'll also notice a lot of the condos over there. Each building is its own association. At Orchid Cove, the whole place is one association. And it's a whole different ballgame. So that's the problem. This, this thing has been pieced together like a puzzle over the years over there. And now it's coming to a head. It's getting built out. And that's why until that happens, nothing can happen. We, it's on us. We get it. But it, it's because there's been so many different things over the years.
Do we have any other questions?
Two quick questions. One, I understand now that I'll be able to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I can understand if that anything can be done. And if anything can be done to the ten foot easement that I have in my house.
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to call you. He's going to call you or I'm going to want to know why. Okay?
Okay. Yes?
He hasn't been down there, does it anything? Why not? Don't you think you have an obligation to go down?
Absolutely not. In fact, that's a great point. I don't think anybody on this board should be down there at all, talking to anybody.
How are they talking?
Nothing. That's why we have an engineer and a district manager. That's their job. Not ours.
Some, some of us have been looking at it since day one.
Yeah.
And I look around. I don't.
Well, we have an engineer and a district manager. We're the board. We're not engineers. We shouldn't be looking at it and we shouldn't be talking to anybody. We should be getting our information.
But we're saying not talking.
We look at it. Some, Frank may not look at it, but like Terry and I have looked at it for sure. Because we, we fight side by side every day.
And your engineer, your district manager and your attorney.
Yeah.
Right.
They offer you professional opinions, but we have no decision making authority. The policies you set, the rules you adopt and the budget you adopt.
But that's when it comes to us. That's the way it's supposed to go. Okay.
So I move that we again table this until.
South Florida.
Until after the meeting in Southwest Florida.
Plus, since we find out more information.
That's right.
Okay, if I could just, uh, this motion doesn't change any of the action that your staff currently pursue.
Can we, can we hit pause on action?
No.
Well, when I'm doing anything, we hit pause. Okay, just, we, we can just have it as an agenda update.
You're saying pause on me for Florida?
No, no, no. I was, I thought that he was saying he needed.
Well, we're not going to push it.
Yeah.
We'll, okay.
What's the meaning?
Conversations. Everything's in, we're not going to pull the co enforcement complaint. We're not going to tell the inter, their attorney that we're going to, uh, stop the cease and desist. We're just going to wait till the next court meeting before.
We're going to wait till Southwest Florida Management takes a look at it. And gives us an opinion whether it's legal, allowed.
Specific.
Specific. And then once we know that.
I don't think you're going to get that. You're going to get him to, he's going to tell you about your entire drainage system. He's not going to look at that individual site and say, because they, they, they don't issue any permit on that.
But he'll look at it and say, yeah, this is a great solution, right? Or he's going to say, this is a terrible.
They won't offer an opinion in the field. They may give us some inklings. Uh, but their, their action would be, we need to be through the form of a letter exemption or a minor modification.
Okay.
Or some kind of official process.
So listen, guys. This can't keep happening like this. It's frustrating and it can't keep coming up. We can't keep joking about it. How do we get this goddamn thing fixed? What is the bottom line? How does mess get his, how can he move in? What's the bottom line?
You either direct staff to draw up an easement use agreement or deny it.
That's the only two choices.
I thought we, I thought we had to let him get a permit. You said there's.
Let him. All we did is.
You said he can't get a permit without us.
Yeah, we have proof.
The county is requiring a permit for the drainage.
Which he can't get the permit unless we say he can.
Correct. We'd have to give her, give a license to allow that.
My concern is, is that if South Florida says you're violating the permit, we've gone ahead to go ahead and build it on that. South Florida's got, we're the permit holder. South Florida's going to come out to the district and say, you C I D need to make sure that person fixes the issue.
Who issued the permit? I thought they didn't issue permits.
South Florida issues it to the C I D for the overall.
We have the overall one permit.
Well, you have a permit.
It's on us.
Is, is there a way of, of putting that in the agreement that says, hey? Like I said originally, if Southwest Florida comes back and says, you've got a problem. You've got to change it. Okay, we change it, but we build them for any changes that occurs that we, that are forced upon.
We can, we can put anything in agreement that's valid. The problem isn't forcing it.
Yeah, we're ready to enforce.
We already did that.
I, I, what can happen is that the person refuses to comply. Say, South Florida says, no, that needs to come out. So that we write a letter to the property owner saying that needs to come out too within fifteen days. Twenty days, whatever timeframe, South Florida says. They don't. South Florida says, we're sending you district to enforcement. So the district is now in a position of defending enforcement action. Initiated by South Florida Water Management District, which involves engineering fees, attorney's fees. And then there might be a consent order that comes out that says this banner needs to be fixed within the next number of days. And we tell the property owner, fix it. They go, no, or they refuse or they ignore us. And then we, the district, C I D are in violation of the consent order. And that's who ends up paying. And one other aspect, if the C I D in the future wants to make any permit modifications. The rules, the rules require that there be reasonable assurances provided. That the applicant is going to comply with the rules and regulations of South Florida and the permit conditions. And one item that Water Management District looks to, to see whether or not those reasonable assurances can be provided is, have there been any prior enforcement actions?
So I, I, I mean, I know it's not like a boogeyman, but that's the problem. And again, I go back to, the board told this individual about to do it. And it did it. And then we're asked.
Okay, so the.
And it's the same what we said cease.
So there's two choices here. We either deny it.
Or we allow it.
Or we allow it.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I mean, I've heard this part three times. So we deny it and then what happens?
They come up with a solution, whatever solution they need to address their, their house issues.
And who makes up that decision?
Them.
The board will have to accept or, or they'll go for your engineer.
If they, if basically you deny the use of the easement for any, any type of improvements on their part. That they have to restore it back to the way it was. They need to come up with a solution to satisfy the building department and themselves as far as the ability of their house.
Which could be a minimal impact on the easement, which still requires the district approval. But I, you know, we've heard all the arguments about why they can't do it. I haven't heard any arguments why they could do it. And I'm looking at this and again, could better, different, my rules advise the board. The property owner, developers trying to put the onus and the guilt. Where the, where the bad guy is. As opposed to them coming up with the solution of the other alternative engineering solution. Besides one that they've installed without the district approval.
I hate saying it, but. How the house, how did the land get sold for a house? How did a house get engineered by a developer to put it where it is without lasers and everything else? How did this house get put there with a swell there? How did it get put where it is?
It's not.
And that's the question.
It's not in the swell. It didn't violate anything. The county never saw that it, didn't know that there's a, that we had that ten foot easement and that. It would have to have.
The driveway, the driveway goes right over the, uh.
Absolutely.
I, I, I can support what Tony said. And a situation I'm involved with in another community, uh, in North Fort Myers, uh, Ruby River Estates. And they have a swell behind all these homes that, uh, discharges into a canal. But properties just went in and if, we weren't the management company then. But they just built holes into it and they built everything else. Water management company came in and they couldn't cite the individual properties. They cited the C D D because they have a permit. So that's where the permit is at. So now they have seventy homes that they have to go in and tell them they got to take out a pool. They got to, you know, do whatever. And it's because, I mean, what do you do?
And in this particular case, the site plan submitted with it, it showed no driveways, no sidewalks.
For this house?
For this house.
No driveways.
No driveways are shown on this drawing. It's the building plan. If there was a drawing, it's not accessible on the website.
But how, I mean, common sense would tell us or whoever that it's going to have a driveway, right? But it's not on there.
But we don't do the parent.
Right.
We don't.
So who did that get handed to?
I, I went on the website when this started to become an issue when the house started construction. They tried to pull as much.
The county's website, that's the county's website. So it doesn't show a driveway.
It doesn't show a driveway.
And it doesn't show a driveway encroaching.
Correct.
The county doesn't have it.
Well, my, my recollection is the plan that went to the county. Mr. Levy was referring to shows the drainage. All it shows are blue arrows indicating a flow. It's not showing the structure, it's my recollection. Is that correct?
Correct. And that, that's what's on the website. I'm not saying there isn't some other stuff that may not be posted on the website. But this is what was accessible on the website.
Okay.
Okay, you have a motion to table this.
And I second this.
What good is tabling it?
Yeah, I.
We got to deny it or not. And I'm tabling it. This is stupid.
Okay, um, Tony, this is a question for you. If we did, um, vote to deny it, then where's the teeth on our part for that?
Yeah, I'm not even sure if you need to die. We've already, the board's already authored approval of the, well, the letters that went out initially by Dave to stop it. We followed up with our cease and desist. We're communicating with the county. So I think it's just maintain the status quo.
Right, no, no, not exactly. Tabled for request.
We tabled. So you have to act on that.
The requirement was to get the approval.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I would recommend, yeah. I think the staff recommendation is recommended on the present time.
Okay.
And I think the district staff and the board is saying to the developer applicant builder, come back with an alternative plan. As minimal impacts on the drainage swell, including removal of the pipe and the filling into the swell. But while maintaining the integrity of the structure. They put the burden back on the property owner.
Okay.
Which it be.
Okay, who's going to make the most?
Well, enough to make the most.
What I can do is draw this on your sendback.
I would withdraw.
And I would draw the motion.
Okay. Who's going to make the motion tonight? I thought you just said we did.
I'm sorry.
Kelly, you said we need to make a motion to deny because there was a request.
Yeah, because, well, it's tabled. It's not easy. I mean, if you don't, if you take no.
They're going to keep doing this.
Then it's just what we're doing now goes on, but at some point in time, the board has to approve or assist approve that request that was presented.
Sorry, I'd say the present time, based upon current conditions, recommend the course of action is to deny the request.
Okay.
Is that correct?
I make the motion to deny.
Staff recommendation, I believe.
Let's get this over.
David, Cal, I correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Staff recommendation is to deny the question.
That was the engineer's recommendation.
Okay, I make the motion to deny.
Wait, 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 wait. Deny what request? Exactly what request? I mean, the request that.
To use your easement to.
For that structure and fill in the swell and have the driveway.
I don't think, we have no choices ever for the driveway. It's just to.
Yeah, to, to close the swell.
It was just to close the swell.
But the drainage, but, okay.
Driveway is over, or said the driveway is over the swell or. Or right up to it.
To the edge of the.
Right up to it, one or the other.
Yeah, there is no swell. Okay, we've been here. We've done this. What are we doing?
Okay, uh, Tony had a, he said you can deny it based on.
Or just deny it or which request? Based upon the plan, based upon, the site condition doesn't exist today.
Uh, based upon the site condition that's currently exist.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make that motion. I haven't been there.
That's, that's, again. I'll second it so that it brings up for discussion, but.
Discussion? Jesus.
I know.
We've been through this a hundred times.
Well, what's hard on me is if, there's a possibility it'll work.
I swear.
And it don't help, other people say.
Okay, make a motion to approve it. Right now.
No, I'm not going to approve it.
Well, what are we doing?
We're not necessarily closing the door.
Right.
On the entire situation.
I hope it works.
Hopefully they, hopefully they understand that they can come up with another solution. We'll, we'll, more than we'll listen to.
Remember one thing. I understand this is probably going to, you know, hinder their C O. But they made the decision to go ahead and do this.
I understand.
On our, our bed.
But the problem is, this guy wants to move in his million dollar house. I get it. Okay, but he did it. Bad boy. Now what?
All right, but you know what? I had, and I hate to bring this up, I had the same situation with my own residence. I had a sick husband who needed open heart surgery. I didn't have time to go through this. I redid the whole front of my house, by eight inches. All right? I had to do it.
So that brings back the denying it, right?
Because I wanted to get in that house and that was my decision. Now, these people made a decision to do this. They're going to have to make a decision to either take it down.
I agree.
Or hold off going into the house.
But my, I agree with you. My understanding is, am I ready in saying the only way we get that going and is to deny it? Am I right?
Can, I have no feeling. I don't know if you want to get it going.
How do we fix it for this guy? Do we deny it? Then he comes back with another plan?
I guess I, in my advice is, they need to fix it, not the board fixing it. The board's trying to come up with a solution to address the situation. Somebody else.
Exactly.
So how do we get that then?
One way to do it would be to deny it and put the burden on the property owner, developer, builder. Come back with an alternative. It might be acceptable.
If, if we just deny it, right? That doesn't mean we're making them tear it out yet. We haven't voted on it.
Yes, we got it done.
Yes, it does.
Well, okay, we have a letter out there. It is a cease and desist restoring. The next step to say you need thirty days to take it out or forty days, we're going to file a lawsuit. We can hold off on that to see what the other proposals are, but I think it's important to at least send a message to the property owner. Don't rely upon our not taking your report yet to keep that thing in place. You need to keep moving and come up with alternatives and deny the request.
So how do we do that?
I think most would be deny the request under the current conditions.
Yeah.
And tell the developer they need to remove it again. And we'll come back with an alternative plan to minimize the impact of the district's homeowners system. That might be acceptable.
Okay, I make a motion to do that.
Uh, you've already made.
Yes.
Okay, so it's open for discussion.
Our discussion.
Board discussion.
Yeah. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, they've been listening.
Nay.
I'm not ready yet, no. I'm not ready yet, no. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna make sure we're talking about the same thing, that they, they, we give them time to.
You are.
Correct this.
You are.
Without ripping it out.
No, they gotta rip it out.
That's gonna be ripping it out.
Or change.
No, no, they don't have to rip it out, right?
At present time.
They can come back with another solution.
Right.
Right.
Until they come back.
We'll meet with water management.
You're, you're denying or you're moving on their current request.
Right.
Which is to put in whatever.
It's already handled.
But we never approved it. So we're denying it, saying we didn't approve it.
Right.
It's gotta come out then.
Does that make it right?
It doesn't matter if it's.
What if it works?
Who cares?
Who cares?
Let the engineer do that.
Well, it is the best solution.
Then the engineer's gonna tell us that.
Well, that's why I don't mind.
What if it floods the whole neighborhood?
What if it doesn't?
What if it does?
It's only denying it as it is, Michelle.
You don't even know if it works.
Then you get an engineer to tell us it will.
Well, I wanna do that.
Well, that's what we're doing.
I'm putting the judgment on the burden.
We have our engineer.
We need to put the burden on them. Yeah, the burden's on the applicant.
It's on them to do.
It's not on the judge. It's just. What if the, what if the homeowner, the buyer's an engineer, the owner's an engineer, and showed that it's good?
Let her know.
Like we're saying.
Whatever suggestion is posted. It's supposed to.
Just go.
Another idea is make sure we get approved, soft part of the. Yeah, that's what I think.
What about that, what about Anthony?
I, I appreciate the board wanting to come up with a solution. I go back to, it's the builder, property owner, cause of the problem. We've talked about possible ways for them to address it. The problem impacts to the C I D and other residents. If South Florida comes down out of just the C I D for this issue. There's a letter out there and it says you need to cease and desist to remove it. We haven't taken the formal steps to go, okay, here's the lawsuit to remove it. We've got to reiterate the response to Mr. Neal's letter. That one's still in effect, but the board is open to other alternative solutions that are consistent with the existing grant permits. It's all Florida. But, you know, it's up to you, applicant, to come back to this board. My, my suggestion, I would suggest the board not engage in decision-making based upon hypotheticals. Not provided by a set of plans from a Florida certified P E who seals the plans. That's what you need to see, in my humble opinion.
Right.
Uh, I'm not questioning the ability of the, let me mention here, to practice engineering in states where he is licensed. But if he's not a Florida P E, I would not accept those plans. I don't think they are.
Okay, how do we get that last second class?
The other point is, it's not, the, the motion is not to approve something that a homeowner brings in, that's a sealed set of plans that a P E from Florida says is good.
You need to.
It has to be accepted by the board upon the advice of your engineer and to make sure that the water management district is not going to, uh, say that this is a violation of your permit.
Okay, how do we do that?
I, I understand that. That's why we, we, I, I'm taking that as the instruction, correction of the board.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not tabling it. We're not gonna address this again.
Deny.
Until these come, we're denying it.
Which was understand.
Moving forward.
Those understand.
I think we, was it a vote?
Yeah.
No, I hear you.
No.
Yeah, there is a motion and a second. And it was the motion that you suggested.
Yes.
Okay, and I just wanna make sure, because I, I think Mr. Levy made the comment that, uh, well, okay, we'll, uh, we'll get a set of plans, uh, that's developed by a licensed engineer from the state of Florida.
Right. So what's.
That's not the approval process. The approval process, it has to come back to the board for a decision that has the review of your engineer and, uh, concurrent with the water management.
So he could still do that?
Good guy can do it.
He, he, he can always submit.
Yeah.
What's happening now?
What, what's being requested is that you approve something you haven't seen.
Right.
Okay, and that's what Cal was saying.
Right.
But in the meantime, I, I just, for this, I very good. Southwest Florida water management, if they take this long, just to anything, we'll be discussing this six months from now and a year from now because there, I could go back and say, it's okay, we'll give you a console on your permit that says at one sixty-two, one sixty-three, Sunset, uh, K, you can do this. They're not gonna do that.
How do we know that?
We just, we didn't.
How do we know that?
I, I, I guess, I don't know. I think the important part is, if we get a set of plans that provides an alternative approach, David could look at that and says, okay, this set of plans takes out that pipe, takes out the filling in of ninety-five percent of the swell, provides a minor intrusion to the swell, so that David can say it's compliant or consistent with the existing South Florida permit. That's what we're hoping to achieve, but that's on them, the applicant, to come up with an engine solution. That's what I would suggest.
Well, it might require a L D L. They might have to get a limited, uh, approval.
No, no, not, not entirely, but they would have to go through a permit process or something.
That's correct.
Yeah. That'd be part of.
They did, they have to acknowledge that this is.
Yeah, it may be, may be as simple as a right-of-way permit since it's not. Okay, the county, you know, what, I think once they, once, if this staff signs off, if the board signs off, I don't think it would initially.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated here. You're saying that they have to take out the pipe? They are never, ever gonna see if it works?
I'm not saying, if the board's looking for the opportunity for this property owner to get a C O within a reasonable period of time, the better approach is to come up with an alternative, minimizes the impact to the district's swell or moves the filling into the swell, to wait for South Florida to say, okay, that piping is not a permit modification requirement. Would be much, I think that's the concern. So the alternative is, the applicant, property owner, come up with an alternative to have the minimum encroachment into the district terrain adjustment, restore the swell to its prior configuration to the maximum extent possible so that David can sign off on it.
And I don't think Mr. Levy was actually saying that they were gonna come up with a modification. I don't want to put words in his mouth. I think he's looking for us to approve what's there.
Yeah.
And that's what he's saying. If he can get a permit from somebody that says it's okay, then it wasn't left.
Right.
But we're saying, even if he gets a permit from somebody that says it's okay from the county.
From an engineer.
An engineer.
An engineer.
My understanding is you will not get a permit from the county unless C I D signs off because they're, because they'll be filling in the C I D easement.
That's right.
Okay, but I would be willing to give that permission if a Florida engineer approves it.
No, they're not the permitting entity.
No, I know we are.
I would say no, because we, we still have, the district still has liability and exposure. We can't, we're not, we're not in primity with that engineer.
It's not our problem.
We can't go after that engineer.
But that's, all we're doing is.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
If they jump through all the hoops, go through South Florida, they go through the county, they go through this board, perhaps it could remain, but it can be a very lengthy process that would keep them from getting your C O.
But if a Florida licensed engineer says that what he put in there is okay and will work, and it'll get rid of the water, then what?
It's still gonna go through those three approval processes.
Here's the deal. But it should, right?
Right, let's.
Who knows? Mr. Jensen, whatever I suggested, there's a difference between whether something works or whether something is permitted.
Okay.
Okay, something may work, but it's not permitted. And in this case, it's not permitted. And so that would need to be run by South Florida saying, this, because David can't say, David's license is at risk and his liability, he can't say, and that install and that exists, that it's compliant with the South Florida permit. And that puts the district. South Florida, but that gets back to.
It'll take too long.
Once for South Florida saying, that's not a problem. It doesn't require any modification or doesn't require amendment.
And that could take a lot of time with itself.
Well, then that's the option.
Yeah, all right.
That's, that's one of the options.
That's one of the options.
That will be.
So it's up to him, he wants to wait or not?
Yeah, well, I don't think we want them to make a permit modification or a permit.
Right.
They can't. Unless we, they could want one, but we, we would need to see that. South Florida's saying, what's your opinion, district? Again, whether something works or whether it's permitted, two different animals.
Okay, so what do we do now?
We have a motion on the.
We have a motion and a second to deny. And now we just need to vote.
All in favor? Aye.
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 I guess we got it denied. I think he's got it.
Four, one.
Yeah.
No, three, two, I think.
Uh, I thought.
No, it's right.
I said four. Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, four, one, I know it was Miss Howard. Okay, motion passed. Uh, next item would be the public hearing for the rules of that.
Yes, uh, I can get that page down. I did not reprint the entire package from last time.
That's right.
Wait, I just have a lifetime. This was the, uh. They're all the same. I'll wait for Mr. Jensen to get back. It's the same one.
You're directing this, Tony.
I'll wait for Mr. Jensen to get back. That's what, can you, Michelle?
Yeah.
Would you like, uh, I mean, we've been going for, for, can't take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Five minutes.
Please. Did we just? No, at the restaurant.
Yeah. They can never use the restaurant.
That's right.
I'll serve you number three.
Number four. Dave. Dave. He wasn't. And I tried to avoid the door. I don't know. I don't.
Next. We gotta get the county.
It's the same thing here. But they do, they do. Yeah, you know what I mean?
But they put in.
You can walk. Yeah, well, well, I figured it started before me. Because they were the.
My color is actually better.
I get, I, I know what you're talking about. I have. I'm sure.
Uh, they grew quick. You know, like. Get where, in like water manager, water conservation area. You know, the, the, the conservation area. She's walking around. It's really conservation. She's not very sure. She was C D. Everybody. All the first hired to rate. So my, I, I know. Vegetation, the conservation person. They come out. They was the nasty. See, she's saying, you're the permit holder, that's your conservation area, but you need to. Just. You're being growing. Lots of stuff like that. But it was like. Well, by the time, just, just. They were on the. This is a, this is. Well, in the day, we gotta get a permit notification and revocation on P O I. And. Five minutes on the dream. All the issues. Yeah. Really, and that was, um, and you. And that was what I, tell them, so. Because we were the front owner. I can't tell this guy getting go push their. That's what I get. I'm too proud.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's. Cause I can use one recipe.
They just have a lot of other things, you know, like.
See, that's what I'm worried about.
I, I, we got a whole lot of all sorts of things.
Right.
Yeah. That's good. It's a lot of other things.
Well, they did.
Yeah.
I mean, when the, when the tax, they just pretty surprised. Four hundred and fifty dollars. It was gonna be also because they didn't have it one.
Yeah.
They, but they won. We're doing.
You know.
But.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you what I did. I took one of those thirty-dollar leaves. I'm doing all right.
What up, Booshin?
Yeah.
Yeah. See the figures. So she committed.
Yeah.
How do you know? Of course, I, I'm never right, but.
That's the idea.
Swells. Basically, I'd say this is. The whole thing is to decide if somebody. Right?
They don't get off. All the other.
No. We don't have to have a town. You have to get push for it. You're too. These guys take. You know, well, they've got, they've got. They're remoting, it's the new remote on the truck. So they could stop it. So there's.
Always this. One. I'm telling.
Two thirty. Is thirty now?
Yeah. Let me tell you something. The problem is. The change in six. In town. It's on both sides. Well. Goes down. Goes right around. And it was. The. Right. Right. Top player. They look up. The. As. We asked. I had some top ethnologists. Why does he best time spray? And the animal says. In the. As that does is the best time spray. That's why we went with what they.
Well, I don't wanna have.
That's why I.
I don't want like.
Oh. First. That's. Yeah. But the. But the bottom. Well, sorry. The only thing I was. Right.
That's another.
It's black stuff. No, I don't know. No, we have. Which section? No, like, I'm gonna say, which section? Some of the. The diligence. The diligence. What kind? Well, he's got. Oh, that's what I'm saying. You're over. There are other experience that have. I know, no, what I'm saying is there are other areas that are having. You were changing the speed of problem already. And that's why they start a spray.
I don't know.
I don't. I don't.
It's just maybe a lot of piping. This is. Never been. Not off of my house. But. Now, I have to say though. I hear you, buddy. He's been doing it for two or three years.
But, you know.
It's. I. In the. I didn't even. Ash. Yeah. And that's when I'm getting sprayed. Another.
Well, they could get.
Yeah. So you weren't handed up. Show. I think now. Motion. When else? The probably running. He comes in from, I think, Ave Maria. I knew it. I know, but where else? When else? There's no good time when. Everybody's happy, I guess.
How many people?
But he. Can't be done there. Nobody. It's not. Not as dust.
Again.
I mean, it's. According. Forty.
I just, you know, go back to the other. Forty other models. But the maximum number of skeet. No, no. Sorry. Doing it dust. Or you're doing it dog. And dust is the better time to do it. So that was why we said her dust. And we put a remote in there so when they see. You can't. Remote somewhere. With that. The remote does. I love the. You.
I had exposure one night. My wife had it. Nothing like. There's. She got.
It's the same thing. It's the same thing. It's exact same product they use by the county when they spray it overhead. Yeah. Same same product. What time was that? No, that's what we're supposed to spray it dust. So I spray later. Cause I'm not gonna listen to. So if it doesn't work as well, I spray later. So. And I think, you know. Jeb might. I, I do like ten o'clock. Even answer that.
Yeah, because I.
I'm tired of people. I'm tired of people who close their phone up. You know, either you want bugs, you don't want bugs. So it's up to you. I mean, if you know it's coming.
To live here, you can have bugs, you know.
Yeah, if you're gonna be outside, you don't want to. You know. But I mean, if you, if you know that, if you know it's coming one day, Wednesday, Friday. You don't need to be outside.
So.
If you're worried about it, it's great. Then walk right through the mist. When I'm, when I'm working it, because it's not taxable.
I don't think it's in my interest, health wise, to walk through the mist. Or had my.
Right. But then if you know what time it's coming.
I don't know. Sometimes. Out there is nothing other than.
So. I mean, once in Friday, usually it's gonna be. It does. Usually. Either. All right. All right. He, he's trying not to go up before nine o'clock. Nine. Yeah.
That's the only way.
Well, I don't know. I, I know he came out to the house one time.
Usually enough, it's a can of three. I was gonna spray it both times.
Well.
Is there a.
Where are you? Where are you?
Newport.
There's no way he starts here. I start here.
Well, no, I sleep in front of the light. I see the spray sitting there.
Well, I'll tell you. I, I spray once a week and I'm, I'm never out there before. Eight thirty, ten. So. If he starts here. Yeah, he would have to start at eight thirty to be over there.
Well, he has.
You'd have to start before eight thirty. Would you be dark?
It was out this Wednesday. It was nine o'clock. Couple weeks prior. He said, oh, I need. Sure. Yeah.
I'll, I'll make sure. I'll make sure he doesn't leave the, the plant before nine. It's gonna get later. It's gonna get later. It's gonna stay like.
Yeah. So. I want you to take away.
Yeah. You're right.
I don't.
That is. That was. But when they hit the aerial spray. It's two of them. That's spread.
Yeah.
And drop. That's what it's supposed to do. Spread and drop.
Right.
And then it drops. When it kills. That's when.
Well, sometimes, yeah, sometimes when it's calm. It doesn't make it to the back. You know, it makes it, maybe, maybe it makes it to the garage out there. Because you, you can't drive over a certain speed. Natural speed of fifteen thousand hour. But otherwise, it just stays behind the truck. So. I, I mean, I am. The mosquito's been pretty good. I haven't really had. But it's been dry. It's really, really dry. But I'll make sure he doesn't leave the plant before nine o'clock.
Madam, uh. Madam, sir, if you wanna bang. Thank you. My boy lost my bet.
Are you back?
Yeah.
Okay, so. You're on the line, Charlie.
You're on, you're on the clock.
Okay, very good. Uh. This is the continuation of the public hearing on the amendments to the rules of procedure. Last time we mentioned properly notice and advertise that I earlier read off the amended notice. Uh, all this, the hearing for today. We had one comment last time. As far as a change. And I've handed out a red line version. It's just at the top with the second page. Page thirty nine. To clarify that sentence. The district owns, operates and maintains water treatment and distribution systems and distribution of water. Waste collection, treatment and disposal system. So we struck through the word also and then added the word. Systems also took on a comma. That's the only change I made since last time. I didn't print out the entire document. I doubt we had enough trees that are no longer in existence because of prior versions. Uh, and so now it'll be opportunity to open the public hearing. To consider, uh, the amendments to the rules. To consider. Adoption of. Resolution twenty twenty two dash oh four. Adopting the red line version of the amendment rules of procedure. Subject to, uh. Imagination and other scripter items. And then manager maintain. A clean copy in the district record. And what I would suggest that the resolution in front of you. Has an effective date of May first. Based upon our prior conversation earlier with regards to the assessment methodology. That that won't be effective until May fifteenth. Cause we continued that hearing. That the resolution twenty twenty two dash oh four. Be effective as of May fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Kayla, are you comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay. If the board's on the side, but if the chair, uh, would like to open the public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing on twenty two oh four.
A second. Andy.
All in favor?
No comments. No comment.
No, no, you had a, you've got a vote first.
All in favor?
Uh. Thank you. Now the public.
Any, any comments?
Maybe, they haven't seen them.
I haven't seen.
They've been available. Yeah, I know. They're not gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're on the website. Several people have asked. We sent them, you know.
Copy.
Uh, copies of it. And, uh. And it was in, you know, the newspaper.
And, and the fact it was in the prior packet. It was ten packet. So this was the only change that came.
Four is the rule, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, that's been.
Madam Chairman, I move we close public comments.
Yeah.
A second.
All in favor? Okay, now onto resolution.
No, no. Madam Chairman, I move that we, we adopt. Resolution number twenty twenty two oh four. Is that correct?
With the, with the latest.
With the latest.
Person that was in the iteration. That was in the last board packet. It's revised. And you hand up to him.
Yes.
Yes.
A second.
All in favor?
Social was by Sam. And your show.
Was an effective date of May fifteenth.
May twenty fifth. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I will provide a corrected. Resolution, the chair can sign it. Connect with me. Thank you very much.
Okay, that, uh. Motion carry all. All.
All carried, yes.
Yes.
Now. Resolution.
And the next one is a consideration of resolution number twenty twenty two dash oh five. Adopting rate schedules. Uh, if you recall, the revised rules of procedure take the. Rates, fees and charges aren't the rules.
Right.
And the body of it, but have them referenced as being scheduled adopted by resolution. And, uh. With the rules amendment being effective May fifteenth. The draft resolution twenty twenty two dash oh five would also need to be effective as of May fifteenth. And so that would be a revision on page two of the resolution. And Madam Chairman, now it's appropriate to open the public hearing on consideration of. President adoption of resolution twenty twenty two dash oh five. Adopting amending schedules A, B, C and D to the rules of the. Four gallons community improvement district relative to its water wastewater irrigation fees. New meter installation and connection fees, permit review fees. And miscellaneous utility fees, charges. And as with the others, this was properly notified and noticed. Uh, the proposed amendment adoption was also included, the utility bill that went out a while back.
Yeah.
And we have one comment at the last port meeting. Appreciate it. Under the magnitude rates to, for the wastewater. To clarify that the. For one thousand gallons charged, even though it's sixty ninety four. Per thousand gallons, it's charged and billed at seventy five percent of the potable water usage. Uh, that was the consistent with the past practices, as I understand it. And that's the handout that you have, handed to you. So now it's appropriate. I appreciate the comment to make that correction. Uh, now it's appropriate to move to open the public hearing.
Um, so move.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Kayla, we should do any other comments on this?
No.
I, I think. Uh, must, if you have something in your list. And sort of count some of the rules.
This.
Or the rates?
No.
Okay.
Like the rates.
No, I have counted on the rules, but. It's never gonna go on. It's too, it's too, um. Sound specific.
Any comment?
Move we close the public comments on.
A second.
Play two of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, it's now in order for the board to adopt resolution number twenty twenty two dash five. And it's attached exhibit. Uh, with the correction to the effective date to be May fifteenth, twenty twenty two. To, uh. Because of the amendment to. The rules adopted by twenty twenty two dash four.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
No, thank you.
Good.
What are you gonna do now?
Appreciate the board.
You know, it's exciting and all, but.
I appreciate the board's input on this. There's some good discussions on it. And staff. Also, Cal, Jennifer, David, it's really good.
And we actually.
Yeah, I know. No, I appreciate that. I mean, that's, that was. A lot of boards don't.
Yeah, well, we decided after that, we're not after your job.
At least not for those.
You get that right.
Um, do we, do we do audience comments?
I, I, I have a, just an update for the board, if that's okay. Uh, I know we didn't have manager comments, uh, so this continues. But, uh, we had a, a question on mosquito spraying. And I just wanted to let everyone know. Uh, before the, uh, the way councils were taking a determination was made. It's basically the old process that Southern Trent use, which is landing counts. And, uh. Your contractor. Chad Kish and somebody that is very cheap that looks here.
Yeah.
You know, let, you know, in the landing. But, uh, when they hit a certain count, then that would take over in the tree. Uh, or complaints. A lot of times complaints would activate too. Uh, on a maintenance standpoint, they do it once a week. And then as the count, you know, generates. Uh, if the count's warranted, then it's three times. But, uh, one time it's the minimum just as a maintenance. Uh, we, we started this season. We had, uh, duet wasn't available, so not used of mosquito mist. Uh, but the duet is being delivered this week. But we'll go ahead and go through the mosquito mist, which I think is effective.
I thought we hit, I thought it was duet. I thought.
No. Well, that's what we prefer, but we couldn't get it.
I thought the.
That's what the mosquito districts use.
He, I thought he dumped what was left.
Yeah, well, he did use what was left.
Right.
But now he's. He couldn't get his duet quick enough to. This does seem to be where. And he has, uh, just purchased at his expense, a, a deep count machine. Basically, it's trapped. And then, you know, his inexpensive labor goes out there and, and counts.
Did he get power?
From a trap. It's, uh.
Well, we had, we had that. Other guy trap them.
Got a guy out there. Mr. Fish.
Yeah, yeah, it was loaded. I mean, but that's he doing it in an area that's more likely to have. I mean, you go in the backyards, it's worse than it is in the front yards. So, you know, if you go in the back, you get that. If you go in front, not so much.
Yeah, I have a question. Just discussing. Excuse. Did I get the impression from the email that you sent?
That he's not.
That, 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 that didn't go through and that the senator, our senator said, unless it's a referendum. They would not, so there is going to be no.
No counties.
No county spray. I don't think people know that.
Yeah, I think it was Representative Robb, illusionism creep. Yeah, I think it was Representative Robb, Alu and Trish's Creek.
Yeah. Somebody, somebody said not unless there's a referendum, he wouldn't. That was kind of go for, okay. So we're, it's, it's going to be on our own. Yes. Okay, thank you.
There you go. There you go, Mr. Fish. He has, his business is on crazy.
So that's why I say I just want to get everyone to be aware of it. Okay.
I'd like everyone to get their time. I don't want to hear any less.
Okay.
Okay.
Leave me adjourned.
Wait, wait, wait.
Maybe there's one quick item, and this is more budgetary. I made some inquiries at the clerk's office as to tilt monies. Those are federal monies, I guess.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it goes into the county's general fund.
Yes.
Then the county can allocate. So what I would suggest is you start getting with the commissioner now before they begin their budget season and say, please allocate some to us because the county starts its budget process April.
Well, they said they use some for the sheriff's department and, uh, fire, uh, district. But yet the fire district, we're not going down in our route.
Well, it goes into the general fund. You're right, then they can allocate it.
Well, yeah, last year they allocated for the sheriff's department from our district and the fire department. Because I looked at their budget.
So the only way to get more money is to get the board when they adopt their budget to.
Yeah.
Have a specific allocation for other services in this area. Maybe even an allocation to y'all. I don't know. And that's something that.
Yeah. And who would that be? Our commissioner?
Commissioner Gascoigne.
Oh, that's what a grant requested, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, he would. I think you need to make a request for that, but.
So like make motions, make that request.
Maybe when I have a discussion, I'll be the next board meeting to talk about that.
Yeah, I would like to discuss.
When, when is our budget?
Yeah, we start first of May.
But when do we finalize it?
The budget is finalized, finalized, uh, at, at your August. But you'll do a tentative budget that will be at the, uh, May meeting.
So you're going to send us.
Yeah, you'll get, that we're working on it now. You'll get the draft budget. Uh, you'll look at it, uh, and you might want some workshops on it. If you do, we just have to have the tentative budget approved by June fifteenth.
Okay, because that won't be July fifteenth. I just want to.
Yeah, July, everything will be done. It won't be your two reports.
What, what? I can have a draft letter for the next board meeting.
Right. Put that on the agenda.
Yeah. Now, keep in mind that the budget that you will, the tentative budget, we call it, that's not the final budget. The final budget is adopted in August. And if you want changes, you can make changes, you know, at the August theme. But you cannot increase assessments, uh, above what you approved by June fifteenth. So that means at, by June, if you anticipate something, you've got to ask for more than enough and then come back on it by August. Well, if it requires a increase in assessment, then you.
Which it will.
Yeah, but you better be sure that.
No, I mean, we'll work within your budget unless you get to say, you know, take a look at it. And if you think we've got enough money for everything, then that's fine. But if not, then you have to increase. There's an expense to that. You have to, you have what we call a, a mail notice. You've got to send it to every homeowner. Uh, it'll cost you, I don't know, by trying to get everything, you know, the postage, the, all of that. You're looking at, uh, it could might be a bunch of five thousand, but it's probably not that much. But it, you got to go through that expense. Let me ask you an elementary question. Mitch hit us with this water tank thing that's got to get done pretty quick. And it's about a million bucks for the duplicate tank and to fix the other ones. How are we going to pay for that? There's not a million in reserves. There won't be. And that would wipe out any other capital improvement being done. So I don't see any way that we can't raise the budget. So you could borrow money and pay for it in less than five years. Is that what you usually do? You just borrow? Uh, no. They have.
You want to point that.
Right, they have. You, you, expenses that size, uh, a lot of times they'll have to borrow one. Right. I, I see that coming. Yeah.
So, so wait, because we have a special expense like that? You can't raise an assessment and then take it, and then take it away the next year?
Yeah, you can. But what he's saying is let them know now that you want to do that, budget for it, and yes.
Right, I don't want to borrow money and pay somebody else.
Yeah, but that's what we're saying to them. If you don't get it in your budget, you're probably going to have to borrow it.
So you got to get on the budget by June. Yeah, either increase assessments now, once you put the project together, we could do a mail note or a, a mailed bill. It'd be, you know, we would handle the bills, have folks put it on the tax bill. You could do that, uh, and then the following year, put it on the tax roll. But, uh, you know, there's options to do it. Why don't you want to borrow the money? Why don't you?
I would. Interest is up and it's going up again.
So what?
But, yeah, but you borrow the money.
You still have the cash.
But the homeowners, you still got to have to pay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but it's got to be minimal rather than assessing it.
Capital improvements are going away.
Right? They can do them if they come and finance them. Yeah, if it goes, if the redemption period on that loan is five, five years or more or more than five years. I'm not sure.
Return it, to return it, to return it if more than five years.
If it's more than five years, then you have to have that treated as a bond and it's got to be validated.
That's the assessment. If you assess, um, say we need a million bucks. There are, would everybody be assessed the same amount or would it be based upon the, just like we do for the non-addendum, which is, you know, us one point zero for homeowners, point eight for condominium owners? Is that how the assessment goes?
It just would be however you set it up. If you want to run it through the wastewater plane, then it would probably, unless it's a debt service, but you would probably have to base it on ERCs. If you're going to look through the general fund, yeah, good. Uh, but if you did, because the water sewer funds are enterprise funds. But if you did it through the O and M, then you probably lose the same formula. I think it's a good idea to use that formula.
Good idea to what?
To use the formula to match up to the ERC proportionally. Is that what you're saying? Well, the ERC is based on utility. Right. So the utility is probably. So they live an expenditure in your utility. Right.
Right.
What are we closing on that property? That's, I don't know.
No, and sure, just one comment, Cal. We have to, this, this has to send out the mail notice, the big add anyways, because we're going to be utilizing that assessment methodology for the first time.
Right.
So by changing it under the statute, it's a new assessment approach. So we need to send out the mail notices and the add. One ninety-seven.
Okay, uh, but you don't have to send it to everyone.
Yes.
Just those people that are affected.
Everybody's.
Have an increase.
Or change, every methodology's changed, just everybody.
Okay, but if their individual assessment doesn't increase.
You're changing the method of assessment. You're, you're changing the method by which you're assessing, the methodology.
So is Mitch working on a, uh, the cost of the water tank?
We've, we've got some costs already. I just talked to, uh, to Terry this morning about setting up a meeting with the fire district to talk a little bit about fire reserves and what we need as far as tank each, uh, with the, with the concept that potentially could we look at getting rid of the canal pump section? If we're able to increase the amount of storage that we have at the plant for irrigation, uh, through the fire, fire system.
Right, fire reserve works on reuse, right?
Yes.
Not audible.
Correct, correct. So what we would do is that new tank we would put in would be basically a two-service type tank. Uh, what we need to use to pour water would be water, but normally it would be set up as a fire irrigation tank.
So we are given prices to, we'd be able to put that in for this coming, coming year, correct?
Yeah, we would probably want to do is plan that next fiscal year with your new budget.
Twenty-three.
Try to get it in twenty-one.
Right, yeah, right. But how soon does that have to be done?
Sooner the better, sooner the better.
That's impressive, I guess.
Yeah, so we get into your budget, what we do is go ahead and get things prepared before we hit your budget year, starting your fiscal year. So as soon as your fiscal year starts and gets the funds in, it'll get things going.
Now, you should have some cash to pay for engineering, to pay for a lot of that preliminary work. Uh, because that, that'll be, you know, deeply done first. It's, uh, when your rate was reduced, we looked at a forecast of, you know, a trend on what you got. And you should have about three hundred and fifty thousand for capital improvements in the operator, in the utility farm.
One other quick question for David. Um, at one time, we directed you to, uh, look at the expense of taking over storm sewers for the ones that we could take over, such as the villages, Stellamar's right north, so that eventually when we repay, we can go ahead and fix the storm sewer the way it needs to be fixed. I have, or what's the progress on that? Because we're coming to the point where we need to, we need to find out whether we're going to take them all over or not. It's something that has to be done.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what we did. I, I actually brought the file with me. I know we started pulling some numbers together, what it was going to take to do it. Uh, let me, let me get familiarized again with the numbers. I can bring something.
Bring it in the next meeting, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that, that the ball hasn't dropped on that.
No.
Because we need to, we need to, we need to go ahead and do something with that so that eventually we can go ahead and repay that street.
Yeah, Stellamar's, uh, you asked us to look at Stellamar's and Dart as far as drainage there, but you also asked us to look at what it would take, how much commitment it would be to take the entire.
Anything that we could take over.
Right, yeah.
Not, there, there are certain places in the condos and stuff you can't.
We really wouldn't want to take.
Yeah, we don't want it, but the other ones we can take over.
I, I think that you need, uh, Tony to look at that also. Um, different attorney, but, uh, the Stellamar's, that parking area, just went through that. You don't have ownership there, and I'm not sure you can spend money, uh, in.
Are you talking about circle?
In the circle.
Well, we do.
No.
No, you have an operating, you have a maintenance agreement. You don't own it.
Well, yeah.
Why don't, I know, just there might be an easement.
I think, I think it's just the agreement. Yeah, I think we'd have to look at the agreements that we've got. According to what the, uh, the CP is.
Because it's always coming up. That's why my admonition at the public, sunshine law is, it test is whether something's reasonably foreseeable, got to come before the board. Everything does. Even when they think it's done, they're always looking back. Uh, yeah, under that maintenance agreement and grant of easement, ended the grant of easement, maintenance repair of the asphalt surface of Stellamar's North.
That's correct.
Yeah, if, if we chose to take over the drainage there, then we would need to do another agreement.
Correct, yeah. Well, and I, I think there should be some type of property rights, either an easement or it should be needed to do that. You can't spend money on, buy something that's not yours, right?
Right, so we were going to look in to find out what that is all going to cost to be able to stand, uh, make it standard for the community.
Right, right. They go into a takeover system, you're, they're going to have to realize that they will be needing or.
Granted easements.
Whatever it is, whatever.
Right, we'd have that property. Right, and that's, I think, because we decided to look at that as a, the POI is in total, not as this little section, this little section.
Yeah, and that, that's not uncommon. Once developer gets out of areas, the times, district, same, same approach, it's a beautiful approach.
Yeah.
In some of my communities, the easement could not be granted, well, we're never recent because of condo documents. Hopefully leased it, so we can have a lease, a deed or an easement. And as long as there's a property interest, but that's the key, Cal.
I just want to make sure the ball wouldn't be dropped. That's like.
No, I've got it here. It had been coming up, so I was sitting in my to-do list or reserve list.
I'll stick to it, Jerry.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to get lunch today out of my house. That's nice.
I can't say great questions, so, yeah.
But this is continuation, it's a, it's a continuation of the meeting.